Good morning, and welcome to your boardroom. This is meeting Adventure County Board of Supervisors, and today is October 5th. And welcome, and if we could have Madam Clerk, a roll call.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Zeradessa.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Supervisor Foy.
Here.
And Supervisor Long.
Here. Thank you. And now it's my pleasure to invite Mary McGowan, McCallen, I'm sorry, up to the dais to provide us a moment of inspiration. Mary is the Recovery Services Administrator for Recovery Innovations of California, also known as RICA. She works collaboratively with the Behavioral Health Department in efforts to transform the public mental health system, especially as it relates to consumer engagement, training, and employment. And Mary's going to introduce her Peer Support Specialist and Consumer. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Recovery Innovations of California is a nonprofit organization whose foundation is the belief that people with mental health and/or addiction challenges can and do get better. We operate peer-run programs in five states and internationally in New Zealand and England, ranging from crisis residential centers to wellness cities to recovery education centers. People who have experienced these challenges and are now living in recovery are great role models for the hope of recovery. In cooperation with Ventura County Behavioral Health, we have developed a peer workforce providing recovery education and peer support to help transform mental health services in Ventura County. Last year Recovery Innovations provided services to 786 unique individuals and conducted 840 recovery education classes. Thirty-six people were trained as Peer Support Specialists. In Ventura County Behavioral Health supported programs, we currently have 25 Peer Support Specialists gainfully employed. I would like to introduce Denise Krychki, one of our Peer Support Specialists, who has been with Recovery Innovations for a year and will now share part of her story.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Recovery Innovations of California's Wellness Recovery Action Plan, or RAP, classes, and peer employment training transformed me and gave me the confidence to apply for a position as a Peer Support Specialist. I hadn't worked in 10 years. Disability benefits were my sole source of income. I could only dream for seconds at a time that I would be able to work again because of my mental health diagnosis. Recovery Innovations restored my hope. I began to believe that I can contribute to society as a whole by helping others. My lived experience with mental illness became an asset, not a liability or obstacle to achieving my goal of leaving disability benefits behind and looking forward to a brighter, more independent, and more productive future. My work with Recovery Innovations and the people we serve has continued to increase my personal growth, insight, overall wellness, and confidence. Going through the RAP well and Medication for Success classes as a facilitator has benefited me personally and professionally. I learned something from each participant in the classes that I facilitate. I see them grow as I grew when I first entered the RAP classes as a participant. Recently, I transitioned into a new Peer Support Specialist position and now work full-time as a recovery coach attached to two Ventura County Behavioral Health programs. I work with the STAR, that Screening, Criage, Assessment, and Referral Team, and the Older Adults Program within the Ventura County Behavioral Health System. I enjoy my contact with people coming into behavioral health who are just starting on a path to recovery as part of the STAR team. On the Older Adults Team, I travel to participants' homes who have limited mobility. To both populations, I offer peer support and introduce Recovery Innovation Services and the concept of recovery to individuals with mental health challenges. I am on a wonderful journey. I thank Recovery Innovations of California for the opportunity, the hope, and the boost to my self-esteem and belief in my ability to recover. I thank Ventura County Behavioral Health for having the foresight to bring Recovery Innovations to Ventura County so that the new focus on recovery from mental illness can begin to change attitudes among providers and participants. People are recovering. People are returning to work. People are living and not simply existing. Recovery is truly alive and well in Ventura County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you both very much. Thank you for your personal story and insights, and congratulations. Congratulations, thank you. Okay, if we would all now rise for a pledge of allegiance, and Supervisor Foy, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
All right, thank you. And now we'll have before us for action minutes of the meeting, prior meetings, and the minutes have been provided to us, I believe. What's the action of the board?
I'll go ahead and meet the minutes.
A motion to approve the minutes, and a second.
Please, sir.
Thank you. And please vote. And that passes unanimously, thank you. Now we'll have agenda review.
Yes, Madam Chair. On the meeting agenda, item 19, page 5, the subject title was revised to reflect the Award of Contract to Security Paving Incorporated of Sun Valley, California, since the original bidder withdrew their bid. The consent agenda, item 19, there's a revised board letter, added Exhibit 6 due to the original bidder withdrawing the bid. And then I'm suggesting that your board may want to consider taking items 20, 21, and 22 off the consent agenda just to answer questions. There is an added Exhibit 6 with a response to protest letters. So there are protest letters on those particular ones, and staff are here this morning, just in case you had questions about the protest letters. And then regular agenda item 42, it has a revised board letter.
Okay. All right, board members, anything else on the agenda review part? In order to make an, take an action on this, why don't we go ahead and ask staff to step forward on 20, 21, and 22, just for a brief presentation on it, and then any questions that you might have? Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm sorry. I just thought we could hear this, and then we can move the agenda as modified. Go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, Mrs. Robinson, Reddy Pacala with the Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. These three items are for Ventura County Water Works District Number 1. All of these items are to protect existing sewer trunk line along Arroyo Laspos's flood control channel, and these projects have been bid following our Public Works Agency procedures, and we have received two protest letters, and our engineering services have responded to those letters, and we have provided copies to you. And I also have the responsible low bidder, the contractor here, if you have any specific questions for him. And we believe that we are comfortable with the bids we received, and we are recommending award of these three contracts.
Okay. Board member have any questions on this? Again, we did receive at our dais the response letter that's drafted on this. Okay.
Just ask, the idea of, didn't, didn't list the subcontractors, and you're saying that they, is that some of it?
Well, under the public contract code, it's not required that they have to list all subcontractors. If the contractor chooses to do the work through their own forces, they could do that. And during the course of implementation of this project, if you find out that they have a subcontractor, and there are certain procedures in the public contract code, how we deal with it. So therefore, we believe that the contractor, responsible low bidder, has met with all the requirements of the specifications in the public contract code.
So you have no problem with that?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Pacala. Okay, that's, that's all we have on this. We will go back and take the action on the agenda review. Did you have a question?
I, I would like to pull item 17 for discussion also.
Okay.
For consent calendar.
If we're talking about consent, I'd like to pull number 19. Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, number 12, I'm sorry, number 12.
Okay. Mr. Pacala, thank you. We're going to, let's, let's, let's take the action first to adopt the agenda as, as presented with the requested discussion on the one we just had the discussion on.
Move the agenda as modified.
Motion, second on that. Sorry, Roberta, didn't need to throw you a curve there. Okay, that is approved. Now, we're on the consent, and she's.
You should have seen the look she gave me, that's why.
That's why you spoke up, huh? She should have looked at me.
And Madam.
Yes.
I'd like to make a comment on 16, and want to pull it.
Okay, so under consent, we have items 10 through 26, and we have comments, we have requests to pull 17, 12, and 16. Okay, so let's do that first. So, to go in order, item 12, Supervisor Foy.
I would just like to take this and vote on this separately, since it was something that we had done before.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, then we will do that. Item 16.
Yes, I, I would just like to commend, you know, commend Cheryl and Barry, you know, from, from the WIB, on this excellent program for, for the Boys and Girls Club of Oxnard, you know, the, we have about 1,300 youth that, that use the Boys and Girls Club, and we're putting the kids to work. There's, in fact, you know, the Boys and Girls Club of Oxnard and Weneme serve about 7,500 kids. And the training for the, to have this youth enter the workforce is excellent. You know, the kids given a level playing field and, and competing with other youth that might have more resources available to them. But I just want to thank you, you know, for a good job, you know, to, to train our kids here in, in Oxnard and Weneme, and providing jobs for them. In fact, I was over there a week or so ago on the kids, kids staying, and I was talking to several families that were very, very happy that their kids had really are working and, and being productive as opposed to being out on the, on the streets. So I just want to commend the WIB, Cheryl, and of course Barry, you know, for, for an excellent job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then item 17.
Thank you very much. I, I do have a question. I'd like to have, I guess it's Mr. Jackson come up, IT Services. I have a few, a few questions and, and some concern here. Number one, for the benefit of the board, if we'll see that this is increasing the authority from 390,000 to 850,000. And in trying to, in trying to read the board letter, it's not real clear to me exactly. Number one, this is the EXELA.
Those covers three different areas.
What's that?
It says covers three different areas.
Covers three different areas, right.
EXELA is certainly one of them.
So, my first question is, how do we miss so, so far, from 390 to 850? I mean, this is not like, you know, 15% or 20% off, this is more than twice as high. So is, what, am I missing something here in terms of why that's changed?
We'll scroll through the different areas. One area is, we have been converting contractors because of the change in status for HR. We want to ensure that our contractors are doing contractor work versus employee work. So with that, we were converting all of our contractors to fixed term. And with, given that timeframe, we exceeded the timeframe of doing that, but we still had to pay those contractors to continue to do that work. That's one phase.
What work? I don't follow.
We outsourced IT Services to FIRE.
Okay, just, or, okay.
So with that, we were converting all those contractors to fixed-term employees.
So we were outsourcing work with FIRE. Correct. Now bringing in?
No. We, as IT Services, outsourced our services to FIRE.
Okay.
And those were under contracting terms. We have taken those contractors and moving them to fixed term, but during that period of moving them to fixed term, we still have to pay them for the work that they're doing.
Okay, all right. So that's one.
That's one. Two is EXELA, which we did not budget for, because at that time, EXELA was not a, an approved project. So that's, that's two. And what's the third?
Property tax.
Oh, and the property tax as well was not an approved project at that time, and now we are moving forward with the property tax program.
So you got three different ones. What's the dollar amount associated with each three of those?
The, I recall, the EXELA project is about 107,000. The property tax is right at 100,000. And then the conversion of the contractors on the FIRE MOU to fixed term is approximately another hundred and so thousand. And then we have a contingency in the board letter of a little bit over 100,000 for potential projects that could arise during the balance of the fiscal year.
And that's for any kind of projects that could arise?
Right. Just as, just as to do with EXELA and tax property.
Ah, so I guess a suggestion I have is, is if you broke those three out, and you identified the dollar amount for each one of those, this board letter would be easier to, to, to follow, in terms of that. The, because a number of times here, I'll read you twice here, it says, "The original fiscal year 2010-11 request for delegation of authority to the county's purchasing agent to exceed 100,000 for professional services, support services was based on." And then it, then you identify two of these items, a carry forward to the completion. So I'll read you this. The carry forward to completion of specific projects that's been initiated during fiscal year 2009-10, and the conversion of independent contractors. That doesn't, that doesn't give me the same piece of information I just got from you. It's three projects, each one of them, this is how much they are, and I would be able to do that. Okay, and then where did we come up with the contingency of 83,000? Why that amount? Usually I see contingencies as a percentage of an overall, is that a percentage of some overall here, this contingency amount?
Typically, our contingency is that amount, but what we have run into, especially towards the end of, we call it project cycle, is that as other agencies come up with their final budgets, that they come up with projects, we wanted to have contingency funds to be able to address those projects as they came onboard, rather than coming back to the board and readdressing it.
So this contingency of 83,000 is what percentage of the total amount for these other projects then?
I need my calculator. I didn't calculate that. As a percentage, we looked at the available days in the balance of the fiscal year, and the average of what we pay a, would pay on a fixed deliverable contract to come up with that dollar amount.
Is this, is this item time certain? Does this have to go today?
No, it does not.
All right, can I just?
Well, I'm sorry, there is, there is a contract waiting for that. We do have people that are on contract today that need to get paid.
So if we wait till next week to get?
Well, they'll be delayed a week, certainly.
We'll be delayed a week, what?
We will not be able to pay them for another week, correct.
And how long have they been unpaid so far?
Well, again, it's on a deliverable basis, and we'd have to look at the contract to see how much of that deliverable is going to shoot. So the difference in this year is, instead of paying a contractor on an hourly basis, we pay them upon completion of a deliverable on a contract. And currently, the EXELA project is one of those that we have a project manager that's working on a deliverable spaces contract.
So, so are we behind paying that contractor now?
We are behind getting him signed as a contractor. So we have no contract in place, and we're trying to finalize that contractor so that we can't pay for those services that he's already providing.
So he provided services before we have the contract?
Correct.
And how long has that been in process?
At least, at least a month.
Right. So if we don't approve this today, it'd be one more week before you could do that contract.
We could finalize the contract, correct.
But he's gone a month already where he's between when he's provided the services and.
That's correct. And he has provided deliverables, sort of.
Again, I, I, the thing, it throws another thing. I'm just a little uncomfortable with an item coming to us and say, you know, we can't, you know, we gotta do this one today if it's on this consent calendar like this.
Well, we don't have to do this today.
Can we postpone this for one more week?
That's the requirement, we can certainly do that.
I'd like to be able to, I just like to be able, I, I don't understand this thing all the way.
I also wanted to pull this item, just because of the way the recommendation is, it doesn't specify that it's only for those three projects. It sounds like it's blanket, and so.
Well, it's the three projects, plus historically, we understand that every year we come up with additional projects, and we were just trying to offset that. If it pleases the board, if it wants to come back every time that we have a new project, we can certainly do that as well.
Well, I, my, my personal thought on this is that if I'm approving a certain amount, I want it to be specific as to what the amount is going for, and it's not read in the recommendation. It's just to allow the exceedance of 100,000 by that amount. So I'd rather it be more specific, and it also seems that at least some of the funds you're asking are in general, you want to be able to exceed the 100,000. That doesn't seem to be a time-sensitive item. I don't know how many of the three that you've asked for exceedance on are time-sensitive, so maybe some of this can be continued, and the one individual that needs to have his contract met can be.
I suggest that we get with the department and return next week with a more detailed letter to, more clear and detailed letter to your board.
And a more specific recommendation, I think, would help me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so then we have, on the consent item, there will be two separate actions, and then the total consent package. So let we take action on item 12 first, as a separate standalone item?
Just, just have us vote on this. This is with the Boys and Girls Club, something that I, you know, appreciate all the things the Boys and Girls Club, I just, right now it's been, again, like we did in our budget time, I said it was spending $400,000, I thought was something that we shouldn't be doing right now. So since it's on consent, I'd just like to take it off and vote on it separately. That's all.
Move item 12.
There's a motion to move the recommended action on item 12, and a second. And that passes with a four to one vote. And then item 17, the request is?
Postpone for a week?
To.
I should, table for a week?
Continue.
Bring it back, continue it for a week, there we go.
Continue.
My parliamentary procedure language.
Motion is to continue for a week, and there's a second on that?
Second.
Please vote.
And on that one, I do appreciate both of you taking a hard look and making sure that we understand the money we're spending and doing it. That's good, very good.
Okay, then that passes 5-0 to continue it for one week, and then we will take the remainder of our consent items for action.
Vote.
And there's a motion, a second, to adopt the remaining consent items. Is there a second? There is a second.
First one caught.
All right. But it wasn't because I was lame, I was just actually wondering how I wanted to vote.
Oh, I see. Thinking, right?
Lame. No one would ever.
Thinking, okay.
Lame. All right, board, that takes care of our consent items.
You know, reason is only one letter away from treason.
Now we will move to public comments on that note, and thank you all for being present on the consent items. And our first request for public comment, Jim Hensley. Good morning, Mr. Hensley, you're welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair, distinguished supervisors. I find this a little bit uncomfortable, I have to bend over so much, but that's all right.
Oh, you can stand up, it picks you up.
Oh, it will?
Yes, it will.
Okay. I'm here representing the League of United Latin American Citizens. We were established in 1929 to protect the rights of American, Mexican-Americans. This is expanded now to Latinos all over the hemisphere that's, we know, we're here. My, my address is 128 Santa Paula Avenue, Channel Islands Beach, California, and I've submitted a position paper for you. This is regarding the Ventura County jail system of the postcards. Now, I'm going to step out of the letter here, because you already have our resolution from our October the 2nd meeting. I'm concerned about this, because it was said a long time ago, when you have your subjugated people, you give them your demands in the installment plan. And I think this is a little draconian to say that they have to only have their correspondence in by postcards. in by postcards. California prison systems, federal prison systems, do have, do have regular communications. The story that they don't want contraband, they're going to get contraband one way or another, a lot of times through the guards or prisoners who work in special trustee positions. The story, as they're going to be coded messages, just doesn't fly, because the prisoners can call their loved ones or families at home. Now, this was started by a sheriff, the concept of Arapaho in Arizona, as I understand, and it's trying to squash the people. He put prisoners in pink outfits and pink underwear. What are we going to do next? Are we going to have pink frilly underwear for our prisoners? No. But we have to have an opportunity for these people to be able to communicate with their families and their friends, and I ask you, please, consider the communications for the prisoners may all be stayed on a regular basis as normal. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley, for your comments and the written statement, as is practice with public comments, that will be referred to the appropriate agencies and CEO considerations.
Do we have other folks that are going to speak on the same subject?
I don't know. Yes, we do.
Okay. So, I wanted to share a couple of words after they speak.
Okay. All right. Sarah Murphy?
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Sarah Murphy, and I'm here on the behalf of public and our community. I've been on both sides. I have been in custody, and now I have been out of custody for many years. And I am totally hoping we could reverse this. The mail and letters and pictures of family is what helped to change me and change my life completely and helped me sane. A lot of family members, they've already been punished enough for our mistakes, and it's not only affecting us, it's affecting our family members. Some people can't get visits, some people can't afford phone calls, and I just strongly believe that it's going to cause a lot more problems within the jail. It helped me stay sane when I was in there, hearing, you know, from my family how much that they miss me and how much my mistakes affected them. And I would just hopefully, strongly hope that you guys would reconsider, or whoever this goes to, reconsider it, because it's the only thing that helped change me. The communication is the only thing that helps people stay sane in there, and a lot of people can't afford phone calls, and I think it's going to create a lot more problems and hectic within the jail if mail is taken away. I mean, we can't even receive pictures. There's more women than men in custody now, and yes, they have kids. What if it's a one-time mistake and they get arrested and they can't hear from their children, can't receive pictures? I think it's going to make a lot of people become more crazy in there, you know what I mean, as far as mentally. So, I would just hope you guys can really reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to let the speaker know, you speak really well.
Thank you.
So, don't sell yourself short as a public speaker.
Okay, I never have before, but I feel really strongly about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucy Cartagena, pardon me if I mispronounce that.
Cartagena.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lucy Cartagena, Madam Chair, Board. I'm also speaking on behalf of the inmate mail postcard system. I understand this is not Arizona, I don't know whose bright idea was it to bring it up to California. I've been calling Sheriff Brooks' office for two weeks now, trying to get information. Where did it come from? Who approved it? Why is it approved? Why wasn't the community aware of it? And I'd like to get some answers, please, if you guys can, give us some answers. We want to know. We have loved ones in there, some of you may have loved ones in there. A letter makes a big difference. Just getting a letter at Christmas time, getting a postcard, getting anything, a Thanksgiving, Halloween card, I mean, we're getting a little extreme, and I'm not crazy about the little pink underwear, but if they give me some, that's cool with me. But I really feel in today's economic crisis, it's not a smart idea, because recession always causes more crime. So, why are we punishing double, the families and the inside? I don't think there's any statistics proving from Arizona that this has done anything to implement our society in any way, shape, or form. So, why are we implementing it? I mean, I don't understand. California is a lead, but we lead in better, not in worse. So, what we'd like to know is now that this, if this is here, and there is claim a lot of contraband, why is the public not aware of this? And if there is such, where is it and how is it? You know, bring me from a month behind that you have so much contraband coming in through our jail system, because I even brought you props. This is what an inmate gets their mail from. The stamp is removed, everything is checked. So, if we have a problem with our correctional officers that cannot check the mail properly, then let's pay for an additional staff. Don't punish everybody else. And if the staff is fine, then what is the problem? What is the problem? Do we need a clean house here, or what do we need to do? Because obviously, there's some type of problem that they cannot check the mail, and it seems to be too hard for them. Do we need to outsource it, then, so that somebody else can do it? Because I don't understand what the problem is. I mean, our correctional officers, are they not the highest-paid uneducated employee here in the state, probably the nation? I don't know. So, who's sleeping on the job, who's not, and why is this not addressed? And I also have another question. Our mailboxes were taken away since, gosh, I can't remember, we used to have boxes in our jail systems where family could just put their mail in there. Can we not implement that back so that we can save on stamps? Because try writing on a little sentence of a postcard. Maybe you guys can relieve that pressure, then. Put the boxes back, so we can start sending twenty postcards, so I can write a letter, you know? That would help my stamp-wise. And if we cannot communicate as much, could you not make those half-hour visits to an hour-long, then? That way, we can have a little bit more communication. And also, we have this new ATM system inside our jails, where we can't even put money on our loved ones' books without being charged for it. I mean, pretty soon, I'm going to have to pay to visit somebody. So, those are my comments. I'd really like you guys to consider them. If Ventura County needs to clean house, and we need to find out who's responsible for this, then let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cartagena. Next, we have Rolando Longoria. Good morning.
Good morning. Esteemed board members, thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. I am speaking as a citizen of Ventura County, a graduate student of Stanford University, who has worked with at-risk youth since my undergraduate years, a graduate student and sociologist educated in the tri-county area, and a current educator who has encountered at-risk youth and previously incarcerated youth within my own student populations. I shall begin by phrasing my central question in a forward manner. The Board of Supervisors finds itself in a place where it can take one of two powerful social positions. Put succinctly, I would like to know if the city council intends to remedy this scenario from the standpoint of, one, the destruction of the human world and identity, or, two, the creation of human resources and opportunities. Perhaps you feel these questions are going too far, but I assure you, they are important for this society. Scholar Elizabeth Scari points out that one of the central aspects of torture occurs in the mind, that removing reference to society and the outside world is central to the process of dehumanization. Removing access to sunlight, clean air, water, human contact, and family communication is central to the process of dehumanization. The Mercury News pointed out on September twenty-fourth, 2010, that larger penal systems in Los Angeles have refused to enact mail-limiting measures, noting that limiting mail would result in higher mental challenges and incidences of violence within the penal system. This violence would also affect the city population by releasing unstable individuals with few or no social contacts into the streets after their sentences have been completed. This is a formula that guarantees repeat offenses. Removing access to communication is essentially a process of unmaking human beings, denying them their rights, and placing prison staff and citizens in positions where the threat of violence is higher due to mental instability. On the other hand, other programs throughout California and the world have focused on educating prison populations in order to deter repeat crimes. Anyone in an education program knows that the best way to teach literacy is through written communication, either by reading and correcting another person's written words, or by writing correspondence to another person. Since the county is now offering more education classes to inmates through the community college system, reducing mail privileges seems like a deterrent to education, and therefore, an affirmation towards repeat crimes. On the contrary, programs like the Buddhist Prison Project encourage literacy via meditation instruction, which can help calm aggressive personalities, help illustrate the importance of social responsibility, and reinforce a basic code of ethics. These are examples of programs that create human potential and opportunity, programs that we can start in our own county, among our own spiritual communities, if given the proper opportunity. As a student who has been educated in public and private universities alongside previous inmates, I would like to emphasize that keeping in touch with the outside world is essential to maintaining a sense of human self, a sense of struggle, and a desire to correct one's mistakes. Those previous inmates who have been most successful as students were not simply those individuals whose families visited them the most. On the contrary, the most well-adjusted individuals were those who held long-term correspondences with mentors, other individuals who had moved away from a life of crime, and old friends and acquaintances that agreed to stay in contact with them. Even the tenants of such programs as Alcoholics Anonymous or Narcotics Anonymous, which have very high success rates without professional intervention, encourage the practice of writing and correspondence with other addicts and prisoners. As you can see, the question of correspondence reaches farther than safety or rights, and reaches into the realm of human development. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Marcelo Morales. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, and members of the Board. It's tough to follow that. Maybe I should go back for my PhD. My name is Marisala Morales, and I'm a member of the Portland City Council. I'm here as an individual member, and also Associate Executive Director of Cause, working for social, economic, and environmental justice. I hadn't actually planned on speaking to the human rights or human social issues of this point, but I do want to echo, as someone who worked in the women's jail about ten years ago, when I was doing my master's in counseling psychology, my traineeship was, part of it was at the women's jail, and then in Ojai. And as was said earlier, one of the activities that I did with the women was to just have them free journal, and all of their free journaling was about their kids, and how important their kids were, and how important it was that they have contact with their kids, and that that was their lifeline. So, that is, from my experience, echoes what was said earlier about how critical it is for the inmates to recover, is to have that contact with family, and especially women with their kids. The American, well, yesterday, the Sheriff's Department instituted a troubling and potentially illegal and costly policy to ban inmate letters. The American Civil Liberties Union has filed suit in two states outside of California, and the managing attorney of the Southern California ACLU has reported a stating that California regulations require that inmates be allowed letters, and postcards are not letters. In addition, the Associated Press reports that Sheriff Harpaio of Maricopa County, Arizona, started this policy of banning letters. Sheriff Harpaio is known nationwide for the abuse of power and violating civil rights. Three months ago this year, Maricopa County settled a case for half a million dollars against Sheriff Harpaio for civil rights violations. This was a case that began in 2008. This settlement will be paid from the Maricopa County general fund money in the midst of layoffs and budget cuts. So, are we prepared to take on the ACLU, as well as to follow in the example of someone that has a history of abuse of power and a history of having to settle costly lawsuits for violations of civil rights? I urge the Ventura County Board of Supervisors to take action to stop the ban on inmate letters. Thank you.
Thank you. Nevin Aaron?
Good morning, everyone. You have to excuse my English, I'm from overseas, so my English is not perfect. So, if you don't understand, please just ask me to repeat it. I have a son that's been in jail for a year, he's mentally ill. I'm a single parent, and I can see from the beginning, when he first got there till now, what a big difference it has made. He's suicidal, and he has tried to commit suicide already once while he was in jail. But I have made every attempt to never miss a visit, that is, when he wasn't in trouble. And also, my letters, faithfully, I have never in one year missed one letter, and that is seven days a week, anywhere between six to ten pages a day. You may ask, what do you write for, you know, that long in each day? A lot of the parents ask me the same question, how do you find that much things to write? And mostly, what I write is encouragement, and how God would handle certain situations, because they face many things in there, from other inmates, and sometimes even from deputies. And I always try to encourage him, the letters that God says that we must obey, the ones have rule over us, and they do have rule over you, so you must obey. And as far as the inmates are concerned, like you mentioned something to me about how one of the inmates was harassing about a daughter, that he has a six-year-old daughter, he said, "I don't know how you found out, but you start saying bad things about my daughter." And so, I told him, I said, "Well, you know, son, it's only words. You have to learn to ignore those words, you know? It's just, people's going to talk because they're angry, and that's how they slash at someone else by saying something mean, but, you know, deep down inside, it's just because they're hurting, they're disappointed, they don't understand it." So, the letters makes a world of difference, because it's an encouragement to them, you know? And as they are encouraged, it also makes them feel better, where they are not giving any problems to the staff, to the deputies, or whatever, because we're constantly telling them, you know, you got to obey, you got to follow instructions, and it makes a lot of difference. I have seen my son from the beginning, where he was there, you know, at first, where he said, "I don't care if I live or die, I really do want to die, I don't want to live," at this point, that he comes out, and he's, "Hi, Mom," you know, very excited, very happy, and it makes a world of difference. I can't begin to tell you how much difference it makes. Like I said, when I talked to the supervisor, when I called the jail, if you have identified those people you have problems with, why not, you know, do this to them? You know who they are, you're well aware of who they are. My son's never been in a gang, never been in drugs. The only thing, he's mentally ill. So, you are well aware of those people that you get mail from that do have that problem, whether it's, you know, saying, sending coded messages, or, you know, drug issues or something. Why punish everyone, you know? I understand. I mean, I'm not against what they're doing, but target those that you have problems with, not everyone, because we are there not only as a parent, but as a friend, to encourage them, lift them up, and every time there's some kind of a problem, you know, just say, "Look, you know what? This is how you handle it, son." And sometimes, like I said, six, eight, ten letters, and this is seven days a week for one year, I have never missed. I can't, you know, the biggest card they have is six by eleven. There's no way I can say everything I need to say to encourage him. And he said the same thing, he said, "Mom, I put a grievance form in there," you know, "and there's some of these guys in here who's on a hunger strike, because they do want mails." And he has a daughter, he wants to see his daughter's picture, he wants to see my picture, you know? I'm a single parent, like I said. He wants to see pictures of his sisters and brothers, you know, the little birthday cards or Christmas cards. I mean, would you not like to receive cards? It makes you feel good when somebody's thinking of you, you know, sending you a Christmas card or a birthday card, you know, just the same thing. I mean, these people are no less than human beings. Yes, they have done something wrong, and I believe in justice, and I believe in punishment, but not to this extent. I think this is way above and beyond, and... I think this is way above and beyond. For me, from what I see, to be honest with you, I see it's more about cutbacks than anything else. This is what I see, because less work, less employees, less money that has to go. And somehow, someway, I mean, I don't mind doing car washes, and I don't mind going extra out of my way to create the money. I mean, whatever you implement, I'm all for it, too, as far as going and going out of my way to put a money together. I mean, I'm on disability as it is right now, but I'm willing to work, or whatever it takes, if that's what is the issue.
Thank you. Your time is up, but thank you so much for your heartfelt comments.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair. I just want to say to this woman that your son is blessed to have you in his life. That's a remarkable effort on your part.
Thank you. Rosalinda Figueroa.
Good to see you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and esteemed Board of Supervisors. I hope that you'll be able to follow what I have to say today, because I really wasn't prepared to come and speak today. What I'm here today to ask for direction and guidance from this board. I have run into issues with the jail before and policy. And every time I've spoken to commanders at the jail or staff at the jail, I always seem to get this message that they are an elite group that does not answer to this board. Here recently, I've been trying to make calls to try and find out, who do they answer to, and where did this policy come from? And I'm hitting a wall. I'm hitting a wall, and I'm directed to get my group of women to answer to, or write to Sheriff Brooks, and then I'm told, no, Sheriff Brooks is on the way out, and go to your Board of Supervisors. And I say, no, the Board of Supervisors, no more or less, tells the sheriffs how to do their job than the sheriffs tells the Board of Supervisors. So if I'm addressing the wrong people, please let me know, because like I said, I'm here for guidance and direction. I myself asked this lady that just spoke before me, have a mentally ill son that's in the jail. Because he's mentally ill, he frequently gets into trouble in the jail and ends up in the hole. There have been times when he has been in the hole for one year, waiting on an appeal. One year in the hole with nothing more than a Bible and my letters. I write to him every single day to encourage him. He has been suicidal as well. But more than that, when he has been released after being in jail for long periods of time in the hole, he comes out totally disoriented, way worse than when he was in. He comes out and he reoffends again, because he is totally disoriented. And the fact of the matter is, is that research shows that any individual, any of us, that is kept in isolation for long periods of time, that we get disoriented. And, you know, I'm here to plead with you to rethink, if it's in your hands, to rethink this policy. It's torture. We have 21, what, 21,000 inmates going through our doors on a yearly basis, at least that's what I was able to read, up to 15% of those are mentally ill. And for them not to be able to have any contact whatsoever, a card, a card does not, is not able to have the communication, provide the communication back and forth with an individual that we're able, as parents, to do. Maybe there are some people trying to get contraband in, but I would say that for the better part, parents like myself write five, 10 pages of letters almost on a daily basis. Do you know what it is like to work an eight-hour day, sometimes a 10-hour day, and still maintain your home and everything else and write a lengthy letter? It is, you know, it is a job, and we do it because we love our loved ones, and we want to be able to, you know, to be there for them, and we want them to be able to do better in society. This is going to increase resettivism. I don't see how it's not. It's going to increase resettivism. It's going to cost more taxpayers money, because there's going to be more violence out on the streets. And again, you know, I urge the Board of Supervisors to really rethink this, and if there's anything that you can do to change this policy, please do it. And if I'm addressing, again, the wrong individuals, please give me direction, because myself and a group of women, we want to be able to direct our message to the appropriate parties. Thank you for your time.
And thank you. Thank you so much for coming to speak. Mr. Bennett pushed his button, but then I, Mr. —
As the woman asked a question, I'd like to have our CEO communicate to this woman about who is responsible for the jail and what the sheriff's responsibilities are of the board, if you could afterwards, some way. Thank you. Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Zaragoza.
Madam Chair, you know, I got quite a few calls regarding this issue, and I had the opportunity to speak to Sheriff Brooks yesterday regarding the letters and so forth. And I know there's many, many concerns from both parties, from the individuals that spoke today, and their families, and also from the deputies. So I asked the sheriff if there's any, maybe an opportunity for the deputy sheriff or the sheriff to get together with us folks, to explain to them the procedures and why they're doing it, and to come out with a possible solution where they might meet, you know, halfway, you know, to this particular problem, and then come back and share with us what the outcome is on this issue, because I think it's important for both parties to understand their issues and also the police issues regarding the mail. So I asked Sheriff Brooks if he would be kind enough to probably assign maybe the chief deputy or one of those deputies to meet with them, and he said, yes. You know, if Lucy and Jim, you know, and the rest of the folks that spoke today, he did give me that assurance yesterday that he would speak with you. I know it's not on the agenda today, but he did share with me that, I know we have some of our chief deputies here today that might be able to meet with you and maybe contact you, and hopefully come out with some solution that we can both, you know, agree to. And I think the sheriff's back there that he is willing to meet with you and hopefully find, come out with some kind of solution. And hopefully then bring back, report back to the board.
Mrs. Robinson.
Yeah, I was just going to follow up on what the supervisor said. I have no problem with contacting the people, and I understand Chief Tennyson is in the audience, and you had cards you were going to be handing out. Thank you.
So he has cards to hand to him.
Okay, very good. Thank you all for coming to speak this morning. We appreciate your comments, and Chief Deputy Dave Tennyson will.
And he's in the background. See, just raise a hand if you want to see.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have no further public comment cards then, so we'll move ahead. Thank you again for coming in to speak. Let's see, Board, if we can handle a couple items before our time's certain, and we'll start with item 38. It's a district attorney item, annual report on the real estate fraud program. Oh, I'm sorry, Board comments. Let's do this, let's do this, yeah. Go ahead, please, come forward.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Ms. Robinson. I'm Chief Deputy District Attorney Greg Rose. I'm appearing today on behalf of District Attorney Greg Taughton. The real estate fraud prosecution program requires a report to the board each year, and we filed that report with the board. I'd like to make a couple notes. One, we appreciate so much our partnership with the real estate professionals in Ventura County. Frankly, we could not do the job that we're doing without their assistance. They're providing us with information, they're providing us with referrals, and most importantly, they're providing education to members of the public to help avoid these situations. With the funding that we received from the federal government last year, we've drastically beefed up our program. We have additional investigators on board at this time, they've all been hired, and the pace of the investigations is increasing significantly, and the pace of the filings is increasing. We filed three times more felony cases this fiscal year than in the year before. We certainly appreciate the support of your board in providing initially for the funding that funds this program in part, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I have Senior Deputy District Attorney Miles Wise, who's part of the real estate prosecution program in our office, to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Okay, questions? Supervisor Boye.
I just see that it's costing you a little bit more than you're receiving. Are you anticipating more revenues?
Frankly, we're not, unless there's an uptick in the real estate market. You get $3 that comes in from selected deeds that are recorded at the recorder's office. We are working on some other alternatives, however. The significant funding that we received from the federal government is for a time certain period, and we're looking at extending that funding through some other cooperative efforts that we're working on at this point in time. But we've been running out of deficit for a long time. This is too important an area, though, not to aggressively pursue.
Yeah, there's no question it's critical, and there's fraud that's going on. I'm hoping that the feds will be able to keep doing some funding, or you'll be able to find some more funding someplace. Yeah, I agree. Good job.
Yes.
I want to thank you also, you know, for the excellent job, you know. I, when I was with the Ochsner City Council, the DA went over, was working with the Housing Authority, Ochsner, and also the Board of Realtors, and at the time, the theme was "Don't Borrow Trouble" was the theme, and I'm looking at right here that, you know, what, about a $13 million loss or of investigations? And a loss of $5 million, an aggregate amount of $13 million, so that's very significant, you know, to try and help the community and from real estate fraud. So I want to thank you for your good job, and Mr. Miles is doing a good job, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Madam Chair, yeah, I just have a, could you identify for us, what is the number-one issue that the district attorney's office deals with in terms of either —
Supervisor Bennett, thank you for the question. Right now, we're having two, what I'll call crimes de jour, or crimes of the day, and this area changes rapidly, but we're seeing victimization of a lot of private individuals whose personal monies are being promised in private trustee investments that are bogus, completely fraudulent, et cetera.
I didn't follow you there. Personal monies of what?
Well, for example, if an elderly person is promised a secure, safe, high rate of return, it's almost too good to be true. And it's supposedly secured by a deed of trust, maybe a second deed of trust. These often are fictitious deeds, they're often not recorded, or there's often no equity in these properties that are securing their promise to pay. So we see a lot of people victimized in that way. And the other area that's really a heightened concern that I addressed recently to the Ventura County government, coalition of governments in Camrio, is loan modification fraud. And this is an area where people are promised that we will get you a loan modification, we will get your payment lowered, your interest rate lowered, promises like that, and we're going to collect an upfront fee, sometimes $1,500. I've seen as high as $10,000. People are paying these fees, which are now, by the way, illegal as of October 2009, and they're not getting any benefit whatsoever. We're investigating a series of those right now that's quite active. We consider these to be essentially grand thefts and felony conduct.
Good work, thank you.
Absolutely.
You know, I've also referred quite a few people to your office. People have gone over to my office and where some elderly person gets a quick claim signed by one of the children to transfer their property to their names illegally, you know, so that's one of the major things that are happening too now.
That's true. We've seen occasions where unfortunately, family members have victimized their elders and taken the property out of their mother's name or their grandmother's name and taken all the equity.
And the use of Realtor and a notary that's totally illegal, and so.
Yes, we've had a few prosecutions like that, and I'm aware of some investigations in that arena as well, so you're absolutely correct.
And I want to thank you, because, Lord, as you can see the young man, in person, we've called you quite often, but I want to thank you again for your good work.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Board members, receiving file action. Did you have any comment, Mari? Okay, sorry. Okay, thank you for the good work and the report, and it is a receiving file.
Thank you very much.
And we'll vote on that, and we'll take the second district attorney item since you're here, and then we'll see if we can do quick board comments before we're on time with our 9:45. So lucky you. That passed unanimously, so item 39, the second district attorney item, ratification for submission of an application for underserved victim advocacy program.
I'll simply submit that, Madam Chair.
Pardon me?
I'll simply submit it.
Okay. Submitted, any questions?
I'm ready.
All right, action. There's a motion and a second with the ratification, and please vote. And that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll do the public works items later. Sorry, we're going to go to board comment that I missed, sorry. Mr. Boye, Supervisor Boye.
Ask your journey memory of the people on this list, and hopefully on Thursday, we'll hear what a vote is based on what's going on in Sacramento. I'm really concerned. I don't think what we're going to see is what any of us would want to see, especially with some of the assumptions that I hear that are being made. $5 billion more coming from the feds? Hmm. Yeah, we'll be lucky we get it done. All right, those are my comments.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. I would like to close in honor of the people on this list and call out particularly Mary Valante. I know Supervisor Long will probably comment also on this, but the first-generation Italian into our country and brought forward lots of children and grandchildren, including some who have done some really positive things in our community, including her son, Tony Valante, mayor, former mayor of Port Waini. Also wanted to point out, we did approve something on our agenda, item 18, to use Transportation Development Act funds for some good transportation services that are existing out there. It's a hard time to do any additional services, but I know that out in the Oak Park community, we have Canaan Road that connects three different schools there, and it would be great to be able to get some bus service out there and reduce the amount of school traffic, which is becoming a real problem, particularly with out-of-school, out-of-district students coming in because they're such fine schools. I also want to thank the healthcare agency, particularly Mike Powers and Melanie Roy and Dr. Gonzalez and Barry Fisher. They came to Thousand Oaks and sat down with members of our senior area, our senior aging council in Thousand Oaks, and was really helpful in getting their input on how to tailor services at the new clinic moving into, moving into Thousand Oaks. And then also, a side benefit, it was really explaining the wonderful services that our healthcare agency does provide. I think a lot of people out there aren't aware of what great services they are, how diverse they are, and how they, you know, really are for everyone who needs them. And then just commenting, a really good symposium, Supervisor Long and myself were able to attend on homeland security, looking at the depressing scenario, but very educational about a potential nuclear threat from terrorists, and looking at how well we are situated in reacting to that and communicating with the public. So that was a pretty fascinating seminar.
It was. Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you so much. You know, as you know, we continue what we have in the past, how workshops for senior citizens and senior summits on Medicare, Social Security, and other activities for senior abuse and so forth. You know, we opened the Nylon Center for our youth over in Nylon Acres for our children and families to use. And now we're proposing a town hall meeting on green jobs, climate change, and the economy. We're going to hold a town hall meeting in Ochsner, at the Ochsner Library, on October the 20th, and this is going to be on, the emphasis is going to be on green jobs, climate change, and the economy. And as you know, right now with the difficult economic times, the focus on creating and on green jobs is extremely important, and we're going to have some pretty important people that are going to be there helping us out. We're going to have Senator Fran Pavly, who's going to be keynote speaker, and we have our APCD officials are going to be there. We're going to have business persons from the business community that are going to help us out, environmentalists and so forth, so we can have a balanced understanding of climate change and green jobs and the economy, and how we can provide more work for the community. And this is going to be held at the Ochsner Library, 251 South A Street, October 20th at 7:00 PM. We're going to have that. And additionally, I also want to share with you that I attended several fundraising events over the weekend for, not only for children, for adults, and numerous other folks, you know, to try to help raise money for, especially — know, to try to help raise money for, especially for parent supports over in Oxnard that have encountered violence with their particular families. And additionally, I attended the multicultural festival in downtown Oxnard. And in Oxnard, we talk thousands, we had probably 2,000 people there that attended the multicultural event. It was great. We've seen all the kids from, raising the flags from all over the world, you know, and I can't remember the name of the little song that Disney played, you know, it's Children's World, and I can't remember the name of the song.
Small World.
It was the Small World, that was the one that --
Don't, yeah, don't start.
It was really, really, really great. And also, we, my whole staff and I, attended a Ventura Musical Festival concert over at Oxnard College. It was a Latin jazz, and Eddie Palomari, he's a very famous Latin jazz individual with Arturo Sandoval, and we had over 500 and some people that are at Oxnard College attend this concert picnic style, sitting down on the grass and enjoying the music, and well, well-attended, so. And I want to thank my staff for being there with me. They didn't have to, but they were there with me enjoying, you know, the music, and hopefully, maybe this jazz festival can come back to Oxnard College again next year, and with minimal publicity, we had about 500-plus people attend that festival, so it was great. And we had a great, great weekend.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you very much. I have a number of things, I'll try to be as speedy as I can. We all attend a lot of fundraising events, and I just want to call two of them out that I attended this past weekend just because of their mission. And one was the Ojai Valley Search and Rescue fundraiser, a group of volunteers in the Ojai Valley that trained themselves to be able to go out in the backcountry and save any of the rest of us that do foolish things in the backcountry. It's just a remarkable organization, and it contributes to the, our preparedness for disasters. And I have to tell you, when I was up at La Conchita after the big landslide, about 36 hours into it, and middle of the night, and I'm there, and crawling out of a tunnel is a search and rescue guy who was there, you know, and they're doing high-risk, dangerous work. Second thing is I attended Family to Family, which is an organization here in Ventura that feeds homeless families, feeds families that are in need, they do a wonderful job, and they had their fundraiser at the Ventura Missionary Church. That, I think, was more meaningful for me after I saw in the newspaper on Wednesday the headlines, which is that the ranks of the poor are at record numbers in this country. And certainly, we've had an economic downturn, and the ranks of the poor go up during an economic downturn, but I think we would be remiss if we didn't point out that there are other things wrong in our society when the income gap between the wealthiest 10% and the bottom 10% has grown in the last 10 years. We are not, there are things that are wrong structurally that we really have to work on and pay attention to in terms of the way we're doing things in this country, if we can keep driving the income gap further and further apart. If you're at the top, you're doing very well in this society, and if you're at the bottom, you really are struggling. And with that, we get so much discouraging news out of Sacramento, we hardly ever get any good news out of Sacramento anymore. We got great news out of Sacramento this week, and I'm just really happy to point out that AB 12, signed by the governor, expands foster care services and provides resources and assistance to foster youth with no permanent family to help them. We've really tried to make a focus on these emancipating youth. They're at high risk, very high risk, ages 18 to 21, and that achievement's something that we can all be proud of, and I particularly want to congratulate the youth that are in our California Youth Connection. They went up to Sacramento, they met with legislators, they lobbied for this bill, and something that I'm going to be bringing back to the board, but I'd like to call to the board's attention right now, is we have between 40 and 50 youth every year that emancipate out of our system at turn 18. And I'd like to ask the board for us to make a special focus on those 40 or 50 youth every year, the ones that are getting ready to leave our system. And now they won't be leaving it quite as abruptly, I suppose, right, but that are making that transition, just like you would with your family, you make a big deal out of that time period. We ought to do it with our family, which are the foster children that are out there. And so I'll be bringing back, I'm working with the folks in our Human Services Agency and our Foster Care Department about that, and just wanted to get that on your radar screen. And then finally, to try to end on another joyous thing besides the AB 12, is that I was up in Oakview, at the Boys and Girls Club event at Oakview, they had a talent show, and it was a talent show of kids from 6 to 10, and it was as good a talent show as you could imagine when you've got 6 to 10-year-olds there. But while I was there, if the board will remember, we gave a grant to the Oakview Boys and Girls Club because of the great work the Boys and Girls Club has done in Ventura, expanding up there. We gave them a grant, and in appreciation of the grant, they made a gift. The kids spent all summer making a gift for the Board of Supervisors, and I have it here. I want to be able to present it to you, and Supervisor Zaragoza can help me with this. You know, one of those paper mache things, right? This is a map of Ventura County. It is not exactly to scale down here, but I would point out to you, it is exactly to scale elevation-wise, so it was very educational for the kids. You know, these, you know, Pine Mountain and all of that are exactly to scale from here. It's a great program for them, and then they put all of this in here, a little more emphasis on the Ojai Valley, all right, and Oakview and stuff. So we kind of scrunched the East County down over here, and that doesn't mean they didn't appreciate your vote for their funding all the more. So I'm not quite sure where to display this, right, okay? And it is on a heavy piece of plywood. It's not, I mean, that's why there's two of us doing it. But it was a very appropriate thank you from the Boys and Girls Club to, and for them to have the children work on this, and I wanted to share that with the board, so thank you very much.
You know, Steve, maybe before we leave today, we could all stand around that and take a picture of all of us and give it to them in appreciation.
Oh, that's a good idea.
That's, I know that was a lot of work and enthusiasm, you can tell.
That is good. Anna, she's, oh, she's ready.
Okay.
You want to do it?
Let's do our time-certain things, because we have people waiting, but thank you.
We'll call you, Anna, when it's, when we're going to do it.
Yeah, thanks, Anna. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have nobody to adjourn in memory of, so I ended on three positive notes, right? It's a great week in the district.
Thank you, Supervisor, and I'll move quickly through my comments. I have a list to adjourn in memory of, and one in Fillmore, Dale Shelby Hooton, who worked for the City of Fillmore Public Works Department for 23 years. And then I also join with Supervisor Parks in adjourning with Mary Valante, who was the mother of Tony Valante, and then the others on this list. And yes, we don't have details on the budget, and that always makes, you know, what I'm seeing so far is moving the deck chairs around, frankly, but we'll see. Details will be coming out. Also to comment on the Behavioral Health Alcohol and Drug Forum that was held, it was excellent, well-attended countywide from folks, and just a presentation on substance use disorders and the translating science into policy and the control strategies was very interesting and well-attended and good conference. It was good to put that on. Also, would like to congratulate the Camerio Healthcare District. They have their grand opening of their Wellness and Caregiver Center in Ventura County, and it is just that, is a center for caregivers to receive training and support, and for community partners and others to get, come in and get information on services that are available to help them work through challenges in their life, both in therapy and in healthier living. And I will have a speaker come in to speak to us under the inspirational time in the future, but it is the first wellness and caregiver center in our county specifically for this focus, and the first in the special districts community, so it was quite a work of love for the healthcare district to put this together, and if you have a chance, it really is a wonderful site. The last, the last thing I'd like to mention on an up note is the Camerio Rotary Club, of which I've been a member for years. We launched a Camerio's Got Talent event, and in doing that, there's been a lot of preparatory work leading up to it. The event itself is October 16th at the Camerio United Methodist Church. It is not a secular event, it is a community-engaging, rotary, sponsoring-focused, to really bring in finalists who have talent, and we've had three audition series that have taken place, and the grand finale will be on October 16th. And we, as you see, we have celebrity judges, Brad Penny from the former St. Louis Cardinals' starting pitcher, Karina Smirnoff, who is on Dancing with the Stars, and Wayne Bryan, who is tennis coach for the famous Doubles Twins, the Bryan Brothers. So we have judges, we have amazing talent that's been coming up through this audition process, and join us if you're interested, it'll be great fun. And it's all ages. It isn't just, although I think the young people with the great voices are going to probably dominate, there will be a top 20 finalist that we will then have the show featured around. And I'll put these up here, Roberta, for your reading pleasure. All right, that wraps our comments, and thank you, and sorry to those, apologize for us running over a little bit, but we'll move right into our, yes?
We'll adjourn in memory of the folks.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? All right. We'll move to our time certens, and the first one is mine, and it is my pleasure to be able to present this. It is to proclaim October 20th as Harvest Month. This is one, I think, that when you think about October, you generally think about harvest, and you think about things going on in our community and the harvest moon and all the activities that take place in October that are centered around what we have great pride in and importance here in our county, and that is agriculture. I'd like to invite up to the front John Crist, who's here from our Farm Bureau, just to receive the resolution, along with Dave and Tressa Wilkinson, of our Fillmore and Western. Please come up front, we're going to present a resolution, and Julie also from Fillmore and Western, the whole team. And they just represent a sampling of what takes place during this month to celebrate, again, what we have in this county and outstanding agriculture. We have, as we know, it's a major industry in this county, over $1.6 billion, 31,000 people annually employed. It is a source for us of civic pride and importance, longstanding county policy to preserve and protect our agricultural lands, and part of that was to engage with our visitor and tourism community, to engage with our farmers' markets, to engage with our Hanson Trust, and to engage with the Underwood Farms where they do the pick-a-lots and the other celebrations they do of agriculture. But again, in October, they really focus on the crops that are searching for the perfect pumpkin, petting zoos, hayrides, purchasing farm-pressed vegetables, as we are fortunate to do year-round, but in October, we have special ones, and to also feature what a great destination it is for people to come and visit a step back in time, our agricultural community, and to celebrate with us these wonderful harvest opportunities. It benefits our charities, all of these organizations connect with charities, help, bring them in to help them with the celebration, and the charities benefit. So it really is a harvest month, and I'd like to just step down and present this, and we'll, if you'd like to comment, please do. And welcome, glad you're here. Please do.
Well, I just want to say thank you, Supervisor Long, on behalf of the county's agricultural community, and I'm here to, you know, thank you for that, and also to make clear that we pay attention to what the board does even when it's something we like, and it's a good thing, so we don't just come here to give you a hard time. We appreciate this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. It's really good for us. We have so many nonprofits that really help from this, and it's just a great month for it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
John, thank you.
Happy birthday.
We celebrate the same birthday.
Happy birthday.
That's our Farm Bureau leader, and please share that, and let's, everyone, please join in the celebration for Harvest Month in October. Thank you.
Dave wants to say one thing.
Thank you, Supervisor. The railroad is very much into October, we're very much into tourism, and I think the key to this is 80%, a good 80% of the people that come to the harvest festivals at our outfit is from out of the county. So it's a great opportunity for us to share what we have in this county with other counties. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you. Okay, we're going to do a quick picture. Take your time.
Okay, one, two, three, smile.
Take them off.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you at the pumpkin patch.
All right.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bennett, are you up next?
Thank you very much. We have, Supervisor Zaragoza talked about getting 500 people at their festival on short notice with a little fanfare. Well, we're going to top you with our Highland Games event that we're going to have this weekend.
Was it 501?
Yeah, at least 501. We're going to top you with that. But it is, you know, we have, again, we have lots of challenges in government, and it is great that there are some people that focus on giving us some respite from all of that, some opportunities to work on this. So, John, would you please come on down again like you have in the past? And this is, this is one of those festivals, if you want to just sort of let the worries go, this is the place to be. I want to read you this resolution, and as you listen to some of these activities that are going to take place, you'll understand what I mean by, this is a great, the great escape, if I could think of it, for this weekend here in Ventura County. Beautiful place to spend time, down at the fairgrounds, and this is a proclamation of the Board of Supervisors declaring Seaside Highland Game Days in Ventura County, October 9th and 10th. The Seaside Highland Games are returning to Ventura County for the 8th Annual Scottish-Celtic Festival, October 9th and 10th. From the earliest days, as Chumash Indian Habitat, known to the Spanish settlers who acknowledged this beautiful coastal area as a land of everlasting summers, it has welcomed settlers from Scotland, Ireland, and other Celtic areas who bring the culture and tradition to their homeland to the enrichment of this county. Seaside Highland Games celebrates and educates the ways of these Celtic forbearers. This gathering at the Ventura County Fairgrounds will bring an ever-greater display of the finest in music, dance, athletics, foods, and handcrafted goods from Scotland, Scotland's Highlands and Islands. The appeal of the festival will be enhanced by, and here we are, all right, listen to this, the last round of events, a major dart tournament, drum major competition, genealogy, Celtic language, and the kicker, single malt Scotch seminars, right, will be taking place. Focus is on the enjoyment of the festival by the guest of all ages, backgrounds, but we especially cherish the participation and the education of our youth here in Ventura County. So, John, if there's anything you'd like to add while I bring this down, we sure appreciate you bringing the games back to us again one more time.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you, Board, thank you so much. There's not too much I can add to that, because that was, that was pretty all-inclusive, especially the Scotch, though. We don't want to forget that. We're glad for the harvest, we're there talking about the harvest, we're glad for the harvest of the barley to make more Scotch, so we're happy with that. But on a serious note, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation, as you all know, and nobody's making any money out of it except hopefully -- nobody's making any money out of it, except hopefully our vendors are. But we forged some partnerships, and I want you to know that we have soldiers, angels on the field. We have...our athletes are throwing this year, throwing their heavy objects, the cabers and things, on behalf of the City of Hope for breast cancer. So it ties in with October being Breast Cancer Month. We're thrilled with that. And we also have food share. So if you bring cans of food, you can get dollars off on your tickets coming in. So we just want everyone to come. We've had 25,000 people last year, and I think it's gonna be more this year, I think. So we hope you can all come. Thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedule.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, John. Let's get a quick picture.
Let's do that. Oops, there's...
Those are just my notes.
There's your script. Good luck. Thanks so much. Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Supervisor Bennett. Thank you for coming down. Also, I note that earlier this year, I confused the Greek Festival with the Scottish Highland Festival, but now I've got them separate. That was pretty funny. We're now on to our next agenda item, and that is to celebrate Mental Illness Awareness Week. We noted earlier in our meeting that we had Recovery Innovations was our moment of inspiration, our RICA group, in talking about the importance of peer counseling to help people recover from mental illness. And also had a lot of speakers during public comment about our prisoners and the difficulty that they're having, including those with mental illness. We've had a lot in the news lately on mental illness, and there was an article that talked about 3 percent of the population having some sort of bipolar disease. So it is a very prevalent disease, and a lot of stigma associated with it. So I think it is really important to make sure that we know that it's something that people have, and also something that they can live with, and be very productive members of society, and some people can also recover completely. I would like to note that we have a resolution, and then we have some people that can come down and help us present this. And Ratan with NAMI, the National Alliance of the Mental Ill, if you'd like to come down. I know Melanie Roy is here also, and the Chair of our...we have people from our Mental Health Board. If you'd like to come down, I'll meet you down there at the podium.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and read this, and then turn it over if you'd like to make some comments too. This proclaims October 3rd through 9th, 2010, Mental Illness Awareness Week, and it states, "Whereas serious mental illnesses such as major depression, bipolar disorder, schizophrenia, obsessive-compulsive disorder, severe anxiety disorders, borderline personality disorder, and post-traumatic stress disorders affect one in every four people annually. And whereas serious mental illnesses are common and more common than cancer, diabetes, and heart disease, and are the number-one reason for hospital admissions nationwide. And whereas serious mental illnesses have been scientifically proven to be highly treatable illnesses of the brain. And whereas scientific research is producing tremendous breakthroughs in the understanding of mental illnesses, resulting in more effective treatments that allow people to reclaim full and productive lives. And whereas misunderstandings exist about many mental illnesses, and our social culture often wrongly imposes stigma on them. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims October 3rd through 9th as Mental Illness Awareness Week, and calls upon all Ventura County residents, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illnesses." And I'll present it to you, Ratan, and if you'd like to make some comments, and we've got one more here, too.
Thank you, Supervisor Bar...Board. My name's Ratan Babnani. I'm a member of the National Alliance of Mental Illness, NAMI Ventura County. I wear this silver ribbon pin to show support for my son and all the thousands of people affected by mental illness in Ventura County and all around the nation. And there's about 14,000, in our estimate, people affected in Ventura County and their families. During these economic times, these difficult times, it's important that we all work together, and I'm pleased to be joined by some of the key partners who are working with us in showing that what this pin represents, there is hope, and that there is recovery for folks with serious mental illness. So thank you again, and I'd like to invite them to introduce themselves and say a word if they'd like to.
Hi. I'm David Deutsch. I'm the Shelter and Housing Program Manager for Turning Point Foundation. We're an agency that works with adults who have mental illness to provide services and housing. I'm also the President of the Client Network, which is an organization that grew out of a committee called the Adult Outreach and Engagement Subcommittee for the Planning and Implementation of the Mental Health Services Act in Ventura County. We recently, last week, sent seven of our members, all consumers of mental health services, to a conference down in Anaheim called Alternatives. It's an annual national conference. The theme of that conference this year was social justice and wellness. So we are moving into the area of doing formal political advocacy for legislation that will support additional services and maintain the existing services. I would say I'm very grateful to live in Ventura County, where we have the support of the Board of Supervisors, the support of local government entities, and especially the support of the Ventura County Behavioral Health Department in bringing people into the mainstream of not only services, but into the mainstream of the planning process, where people who have suffered from mental illness are really heard, and where they actually have a significant input into how policy is shaped and implemented in our county.
I know we also have the Chair of our Mental Health Board, Irene. Did you want to make any comments?
I would just like to thank all of you for the support that you've given us, especially when we've had the Mental Health Services Act funds, to be able to build programs that really reach every age level, every race, every creed in our community. And we're continuing that good work, and we hope you continue to appoint really good people that will work hard on our boards, because we're a very hard-working board, and you've kept us busy, and thank you for your support.
They are a very hard-working board. Anyone else I could make comments?
Good morning, and thank you for this. I'm Mary Ellen Collins. I am the Director of United Parents for Families, and we serve generally the population of 18 and under. I am the parent of a child that was diagnosed around the age of six, and it's been quite the journey. And I never would have anticipated our county doing as much as it has for those with mental illness, and I'm very proud to be a part of that continuum of care, because whether a child is young, whether your child is 52 years old, it doesn't matter. It's quite the journey, and because of your support, our Behavioral Health Agency has been able to establish a continuum of care that didn't exist 10 years ago. And I commend NAMI and the Client Network, RICA, all of our partners, and we do work together with your support. Thank you.
And we do know how important it is to have family members help in the recovery of their family members. And one of those individuals who has gotten very involved is Pam Roach. So I have a resolution in your honor, if I may. It reads, "To recognize Pamela Roach for two years of dedicated service as Chair of the Mental Health Board. Whereas Pamela Roach has dedicated over a decade of service to the mental health community in Ventura County, and has made significant contributions to the health and well-being of those in need of mental health services. And whereas she has been an outstanding leader of the Mental Health Board as a longstanding member, and more recently serving as the Chair from 2008 to 2010, where she has had a direct influence in promoting the Board's mission in developing quality services for those with mental illnesses and their families. And whereas Pamela has been a tireless advocate for children as Chair of the Mental Health Board's Children's Committee, building collaborative relationships with schools, SELPA, the county, and community agencies, as well as participating in several programs that support youth and their families, such as the RAP Whatever It Takes Committee, a great committee, the Inter-Agency Policy Council, and United Parents. And whereas Pamela was instrumental in the implementation of countywide initiative that focuses on educating youth about suicide prevention, which was marked by the First Annual Observance of Yellow Ribbon Suicide Awareness and Prevention Week in Ventura County the week of September 4th through 11th, 2010. And whereas Pamela Roach is truly an asset to the Behavioral Health Department and to Ventura County through her selfless dedication and countless hours given to helping those in need in the mental health community, and always doing so while maintaining a very positive attitude, incredible strength of character, and boundless energy. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in recognizing Pamela Roach for her two years of dedicated services Chair of the Mental Health Board. Thank you so much for all you do."
Thank you. (applause) Now, I don't know what to say, but thank you. As you know, nothing happens in a vacuum. And I've been so blessed on my children's committee and on the board of having dedicated members who are passionate about making the lives of the mentally ill and their families better in our community. And we are so fortunate, because both the department and you on the board have embraced and promoted wellness and recovery, which is just outstanding. And more importantly, the inclusion of the voice of family members and the consumers. And thank you. Gosh, I don't know what else to say.
Good morning, members of the Board. I'm really proud here this morning to see these people here, our partners, and family members, and consumers. And it's been my pleasure to work with these people and to hopefully promote anti-stigma, and to help promote the wellness, again, and recovery of our consumers and our community. And I really want to thank Pam. I've known Pam. I think I met Pam first, I was a clinician at Phoenix School, and she was working on her, getting an internship, I think, for her master's degree. So we had a lot of fun back then, so I've known her for many years, and she's been a wonderful advocate, Mary Ellen Collins, of course, and Ratan, and everybody here, the Mental Health Board, and especially, I really thank you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. (applause)
Okay. I'm gonna take two. This will be the first one. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you. Okay, Board members, I'm going to move on to our next time-certain item, and that is to...it's item number 30, which is to...got this backwards. Okay, to proclaim Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So I'm going to do that one first. I had them reversed, sorry. So I'm going to invite to the podium Eric Sturnett from Interface Family and Children and Family Services, Catherine Dugan, is Catherine here from the District...there you are, yes, good, District Attorney's Office, and Caroline Crochetel, if I pronounced that right, from the Coalition to End Family Violence, Elaine Curry, the Partnership for Safe Families and Communities of Ventura County. It is my pleasure to present this resolution, and I'll do that and then step down to give you some time to speak also. This is a October 2010 Domestic Violence Awareness Month resolution. It is to recognize that the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security, and humanity due to systemic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control, and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly. The problems of domestic violence are not confined to any particular group or groups of people, any class, any particular income level at all. It crosses all economic, racial, societal barriers, and unfortunately are supported by societal indifference. And it is through the impact of people like you all and what we do in this community to put a spotlight on domestic violence. The impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, certainly affecting individuals and our society as a whole, and our community across the United States and the world. But it is through the great work of the many partners we have in this community, the Partnership for Safe Families and Communities of Ventura County, the Designated Child Abuse Prevention Council, Interface Children and Family Services, the District Attorney's L.A. Liston Crime Victims Assistance Program, the Coalition to End Family Violence, and other advocates who've come together to demonstrate their commitment to address domestic violence in our community, and to strengthen services to reach out to victims and families, to share with them that there are other paths to take, there is strong support for them, and they can change their lives, and that we are there to help them in whatever their needs are. So by proclaiming this month, we're certainly urging all of our residents to join in this important observance, to reaffirm a commitment to see that victims of domestic violence receive our respect, our understanding, and our help throughout the year, not just in the month of October, but again, to put that spotlight on this, so that there is a raised consciousness and awareness, and we can make a difference in helping people who are victims of domestic violence. I'll step down to present this and invite you to say words, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. We definitely really appreciate the opportunity to highlight the need for focus on domestic violence. And I would encourage you to be aware of the various activities that are going to be happening in the month of October. One I would particularly highlight, there's a project called the Clothesline Project. So this is a physical display of shirts with messages and artwork that victims have made, and that's displayed on a clothesline, and it's at different facilities during the month. And I'd encourage you to take a look at it. You definitely will not forget it if you see it. And I also wanted to just acknowledge the fact that, because, again, we are in a position where we don't have a state budget, we have two organizations, the Coalition and Interface, that are continuing to choose to provide shelter, even though we have really no assurance of funding, and we're having to float that, all of the costs of that, all the way through at this point with the budget delay, probably nearly halfway through the year. This is a tremendous burden for these nonprofits, and I think both speaks to the commitment that you have from partners in the community to really step up and make solutions happen for our victims. And yet, it's also, I think, a call for us to be thinking in the long term about how are we going to make sure that we protect these resources for victims who really need the encouragement to be able to step away from those violent situations. And of course, the state of the economy at this point is having a further kind of adverse impact, where women are even more reluctant to leave, knowing that being able to live on their own is even that much more difficult in the current situation we have in. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, and certainly, I think as a community, we should be thinking about ways that we can, you know, improve support to agencies and organizations that are supporting domestic violence victims. So thank you again for highlighting this today.
And thank you for the good reminder today.
Thank you. Members of the Board, Ms. Robinson, thank you for taking the time this morning to talk about this really important subject in our community. Law enforcement throughout the state of California receives about 200,000 911 calls regarding domestic violence in the course of a year, and we know that 35 percent of the victims of domestic violence don't make that call, that they are not reporting. Nearly 20,000 women seek shelter every year in this state, fleeing the violence. Another 20,000 are in need of emergency food for themselves and for their children, not to mention the counseling services that are so important to their learning how to move forward with their life. This is a problem so big that no single agency can begin to solve it. We must work as partners. We must collaborate. And one of the things I'm most proud of about Ventura County is the way that we do that. And today, I wanted to take this time to bring your attention to a new collaboration that the District Attorney's Crime Victims Assistance Division has engaged in, because I think you'll find it also quite impressive. I've asked to join us this morning a Dr. Popolo from California Lutheran University. She is the Director of all graduate programs in psychology for the university. She is also now one of our volunteers at the District Attorney's Crime Victim Assistance Division. I will recruit from anywhere, anyplace, it doesn't matter. The university now has another, a new counseling program which is designed specifically to help those victims with their really unique problems. So it's another great resource for us as well. We're also working with the university on some other ideas such as an intern program in our division. We know that with the budget problems, we don't have the victim advocates in the division that we had 10 years ago. In fact, we're greatly reduced. We've gone back to the idea of volunteerism. That's how we're responding to the 3,500 domestic violence victims that come to our division every year for help. Many of them have not made a police report, probably half of them have not. They're coming to us for help with restraining orders, shelter, emergency food, and so forth. Having the partnerships with Interface, the Coalition, and now the university expands our ability to respond to those victims. So I'm really pleased, and I wanted to give Dr. Popolo a moment this morning to talk about how much fun she's been having as a volunteer in our division and about what the university is doing on this really important problem.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm honored to be here. We were the recipient of a very sizable grant from the Verizon Foundation and have been able to support the development of research and intervention programs through their generosity. I knew when we received the grant that I needed to have firsthand experience. And I met with Catherine, and sometimes there's a symmetry that happens immediately. She was talking a language that I understood, and I felt very comfortable about the work we could do together. Our programs, I don't know if you know, are doing quite well in graduate psychology, and we've just launched a doctoral program in clinical psychology. Our first cohort started with 20 students. And so we believe we can make an impact in Ventura County. Domestic violence is an area that's often overlooked, and it takes collaboration amongst many people to start to do good things for survivors. And we're very excited about being able to do that and to be a part of Ventura County and working with the District Attorney's Office. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Long and the board, for all of your support, not only in October but year-round. As Eric said, it's been a very difficult year, and our staff and our employees are working tirelessly to keep our shelter-based programs going and to not only help victims of domestic violence, but really help them through education and prevention, which is important. So the collaboration of all of our agencies is really vital right now, and we thank you very much for your support.
Ben, Chair, if I could just, if I could just say, you know, a comment about recruiting and, you know, there's so many things in Ventura County. If you can get people to touch it once, they're really there. And so I just, congratulations, you reeled another one in here.
Thank you, Supervisor Long and the board. As the Partnership for Safe Families and Communities, we are honored to be a partner with Interface Children and Family Services and also the Coalition for Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault. As you know, throughout the year, we work with violence prevention and awareness out in the community. And the work that they do every day, and as part of our Domestic Violence Committee, getting the word out around prevention is important out in the community. Tomorrow, we will be highlighting and having a panel at our general partnership meeting at Casa Lopez on domestic violence, and we will have several people up talking about that as well. So once again, thank you for your support. It's through your support that all the agencies are able to continue to do prevention work out in our county and our community. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for coming in this morning. I'm going to present this to Eric and the Interface Children and Families, and we can certainly get copies to all of you.
You share it around.
The Clothesline Project is marvelous. It has such a visual impact that makes a difference. Thank you for what you do. We're going to take a real quick shot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, all of you come up for our advocates on this. And Eric.
Really? I'd do a really wide angle then. Do as much as you can, everyone.
Okay. One, two, three. One more. Thank you.
Okay, board members, I'm going to stay right here and introduce our next resolution. And it's my pleasure to be able to present this. This is a year of celebration for the Child Development Resources of Ventura County, and it is their 30th anniversary of CDR's excellent service in our county. And I know all of you are familiar with the good work CDR performs for us. I'd invite up to join me here Don Henninger, our Executive Director, and Jack, please come up. Don has over 30 years' experience working with children and families, serves on several statewide boards, and is the face of the Child Development Resources here in our county. So it's a pleasure to have him and Jack here, who is his right and left and middle man, wingman.
That's right.
CDR has been providing quality childcare services to Ventura County residents since 1980. It's recognized nationally, statewide, and locally for its accomplishments in the area of quality childcare and early education programs. It has 400 dedicated employees located in 36 locations throughout our county that provide core services, including technical assistance and training to promote quality childcare along with free childcare referral services to anyone who might need help. CDR administers the centralized eligibility list, which is a waiting list for subsidized childcare of more than over 3,000 families and 5,000 children in need of services in our county. And the core services of Child Development Resources, providing Head Start preschool for over 1,100 children, early Head Start for 248 children, and state preschool for 390 children every year. Subsidizes that support over 5,600 children to receive childcare and the facilitation of generating over $47 million to the local childcare workforce annually. So this truly is an economic engine and an investment, not just in our county but in our future generations, that CDR has provided for decades now of quality service and quality workers and quality policies and implementing those policies for support for children in our community. They assist more than 1,000 childcare providers in that good work. They do so because you don't do it alone, but you do it with partnerships with parents and the community. And they partner with many in this community, including our own Human Services Agency, the Ventura County Office of Education, First Five of Ventura County, the Childcare Planning Council, and many others. They fulfill the Child Development Resources vision, which is helping stars shine their brightest. And those stars are our very littlest ones. So it's great to be able to have them come in this morning, to congratulate them for 30 wonderful years of providing the best quality childcare referrals and services to our very youngest in our community, thanking them for their collaboration and leadership in doing so, and to appreciate the investment that they've made in the generation ahead. So on behalf of the board, I will present this to you and invite you, please, come up and speak. And good to see you. Thank you, Chair of the Board, members of the board. Ms. Robinson, it's good to see all of you. 30 years, my gosh. Our CDR services actually predate the formation of our agency. Head Start has been in this community for 45 years. I began my career 30 years ago as an eligibility worker for the county doing Medi-Cal. Very brief stint, but even at that time, 30 years ago, Child Development Resources was there, reaching out to families and children. Just envision over those 30 years or 45 years if you count Head Start services, all of the thousands of children that we've impacted. When I stop and think about those little faces, those three- and four-year-olds and all of the kids we have enrolled in subsidized childcare, it's truly an honor to say that I represent this organization. Of course, we don't do it alone. We do it in partnerships. Very pleased to have a major contract with the County of Ventura. I'm also pleased, not only because I have my roots here at the county, but because I've worked with Human Services Agency for many, many of those decades of that time. Pleased to work with Barry Zimmerman now, does an excellent job for us. He does an excellent job for you and for the children in this community. So I'm very, very pleased at our partnership. CDR is an economic engine in this community. We pour nearly $50 million annually into the community, but our impact is much, much broader than that. CDR is there not only to keep kids learning, but parents earning so that they can go to work. Many of you folks here may have kids who are in childcare. You know, you wouldn't be here today if you didn't have somewhere for those kids to go. And that is the role that Child Development Resources plays. I'm very honored about the recognition. Thank you for all of your support, Kathy, over the years. We invite you out to a celebration I'm going to ask Jack to talk about. Thank you all. I appreciate the collaboration and the recognition for 30 amazing years. Thank you. Jack?
Good morning, board. Thank you, Kathy. Really appreciate the acknowledgement this morning for the 30 years that CDR has been here in this county and the community. I have an important announcement. The Third Annual Celebrate the Child event is scheduled for 10/10/10, which aligns really nicely with our 30th anniversary. And we brought for the county clerk and for your pleasure our new brochure that highlights our many programs and services, and also a flyer in there about the Celebrate the Child event. We expect over 2,000 children and 1,000 adults at the historic Camarillo Ranch House on October 10th on Sunday. We invite you to attend. We have a full program of entertainment, child-friendly activities, and over 110 food vendors that have contributed food for the event. All free to the community. Completely free, and it's a fun day to celebrate our youngest stars of the future, our children here of Ventura County. So on behalf of Child Development Resources, our Board of Directors, and our executive team, again, thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing you at the event on Sunday. Thank you.
That's great. I'll be there. 110 food vendors? All right, let's take a picture. Do you have anyone else here?
No. You didn't bring the little ones?
No.
We should. That would be so much fun. Okay. There we go. There you go. Yeah, this is ready, you said. But I can't see anything in it.
We'll give it a shot.
Okay. Okay. See? Oh, yeah, I can see it. Okay. Let me take one more. You have to look through your detail.
We're going to see you on Sunday.
I think we really get you on here.
Thank you, Eric. You're honored. Thank you, board members. Now we are still on track here, and we're going to, what? We're going to move ahead with our item 32, which is to have a demonstration of County View.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mrs. Robinson, good morning. I'm Lori Carrilla. I'm the County Geographic Information Officer. I am responsible for County GIS, which is a division of IT Services. First, I'd like to say that, or offer, that County GIS would be honored to host that beautiful three-dimensional map of Ventura County in our map gallery in the Lower Plaza if you do not find another place that you prefer. That's a beautiful rendition of our county. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today and present a new service available to our public through the county internet. County View is a GIS application that gives access to imagery, spatial data, and information and functionality about the county of Ventura that is very often requested through email, telephone inquiries, and public counter inquiries by our public. There's a lot of functionality. I'm going to show you just a subset of functionality today, mostly that which is requested most often. Excuse me, I've got a few things preloaded here for you. So that's our website. That's the County GIS website that I launched from. Let me expand this. This is County View, and as I said, we've built this basically on the needs that we have responded to through phone inquiries and public counter inquiries and so on. We have had various applications available through the internet before this time, but none that had all of the functionality and all of the data and layers that we now have So one of the things that people like to do, and I'm going to say everything that I do because I can see that you won't be able to read any of the labels that are up there. But one of the things that people like to do is they do like to be able to view and access various data layers, spatial data about the county. And one of the most important pieces of information is hazard data. And we do have the tsunami inundation zone loaded in here. That's the layer that you see right down here. I'm a little bit handicapped with this, whoops, with this laptop mouse. Let's go back and zoom out again. But you can see this is the tsunami inundation layer. Now, once the Office of Emergency Services has finalized the evacuation routing, we will also include that routing layer here on the County View.
How deep does a tsunami go in? A mile or two miles?
Supervisor Zaragoza, I have researched the data available to me, and I posed that question to the OES as to what height of a tsunami or what height of a wave was this calculated on. The data was actually prepared by a consortium of, I think it was the University of Southern California, with the State Office of Emergency Services. And the map that they prepared says that they've used a number of data sources, but they did not stipulate a particular wave height, unfortunately.
I've heard about one mile or two miles into the.
OES is working on that. Dale Carnahan is chairing that work, so.
Right. So what they've said is that this is the most likely inundation that would occur under various circumstances.
I can see right close to my house. That's why I was asking.
That's why you'll be interested in the evacuation routes when those are available as well. We'll also add other hazard layers when the appropriate authorities who vet those layers make them available to us. In addition to hazard layers, of course, people are interested in any information and data that is associated with emergencies, such as hospitals, where are they located? And that's these blue symbols here, the H's. They also want to know where the fire stations are. They need to know this information before an emergency occurs and certainly perhaps while there's an emergency. Now, there are a number of data layers here. One would not want to see them all at the same time, so one can go through and turn them on and off at will. This is the time of year when people are interested in elections. So we have the elections precincts. And in addition to the precincts themselves, this is a large layer, so it takes a little bit of time to render. The blue boundaries are the election precinct boundaries. The dots within those boundaries is the location of the polling place for that district. We have a feature called Identify. When I click on that, I can come down here, choose which layer I'm interested in getting additional background information on. So I'll choose the election precincts. And when I click on a precinct- Supervisor Zaragoza, I have researched the data available to me, and I posed that question to the OES as to what height of a tsunami or what height of a wave was this calculated on. The data was actually prepared by a consortium of, I think it was University of Southern California, with the State Office of Emergency Services. And the map that they prepared says that they've used a number of data sources, but they did not stipulate a particular wave height, unfortunately.
I've heard about one mile or two miles into the...
OES is working on that. Dale Carnahen is chairing that work, so...
Right. So what they've said is that this is the most likely inundation that would occur under various circumstances.
I can see right close to my house, that's why I was asking.
That's why you'll be interested in the evacuation routes when those are available as well. We'll also add other hazard layers when the appropriate authorities who vet those layers make them available to us. In addition to hazard layers, of course, people are interested in any information and data that is associated with emergencies, such as hospitals, where are they located? And that's these blue symbols here, the H's. They also want to know where the fire stations are. They need to know this information before an emergency occurs and certainly perhaps while there's an emergency. Now, there are a number of data layers here. One would not want to see them all at the same time, so one can go through and turn them on and off at will. This is the time of year when people are interested in elections. So we have the elections precincts. And in addition to the precincts themselves, this is a large layer, so it takes a little bit of time to render. The blue boundaries are the election precinct boundaries. The dots within those boundaries is the location of the polling place for that district. We have a feature called Identify. When I click on that, I can come down here, choose which layer I'm interested in getting additional background information on. So I'll choose the election precincts. And when I click on a precinct, or even more specifically, click on the polling place symbol, I can see not only the name of the precinct, that one was precinct number 327 in Camarillo, but I have the address here of the polling place and the name of the polling place. This information is requested quite frequently through my office, as well as through the elections office throughout the month preceding month of and generally the month...
And to get to that dialogue box, you had to click on information up at the top?
Correct. The little "I" button up here. And we can do that for any layer, so we can choose any layer we wish, and I chose the precincts. In addition to elections...
We're not interested in precincts.
In additions to election information, our public, of course, is interested in who their elected officials are. And as soon as they turn on the political district's boundary, they will see all of their elected representatives for that area. They'll see the name of their supervisor, their congressional representative, state assembly, senatorial. Now, one of the things that I want to do, because this is a work in progress, is be able to link documents, maps, websites to the data that you can see on a map. And so one of the things we're working on right now is that we're going to create linkages from... Let me open up the "I" button so that I can show you what I'm talking about. But just as we looked at the information about precincts, we can certainly look at information about political districts. And what we're going to do is create a hyperlink from your districts to your website, so that if they see that they're in your district, they can click over here on, it's further down, on the supervisory district, and it'll take them automatically to your webpage. That way, they'll always have whatever information is of interest to them from you, but your contact information, which will always be kept current on your website. So that'll probably be available within a week or two. We can also see the county libraries, county parks, school districts. People often want to know when they're planning where to purchase a home or where to move. They're interested in what school district they're in. So we do identify the elementary and high school school districts here. Now, most of this functionality and most of these data are developed here within the County of Ventura, but wherever we can take advantage of other tools as an adjunct to what we can provide, we do so. And while Google is not a good alternative to County View because it does not have the current and accurate information about our county that we have, they do have another tool that people find quite interesting, and it's called Google Street View. But before I take you there, I want to show you some of the functionality that people often want to do. And that is, in addition to simply looking at layers and spatial data, they want to locate properties. And very often, they want to locate their own property.
You call that Google what?
Google Street View.
Street View.
And I'm going to show you that.
And this is more specific than Google to Ventura County, isn't it?
Well, the Google Street View is directly associated with Google. Everything else on here comes from us, is developed internally, other than the imagery which we contract for. And I'm going to show you some imagery as well. So one of the things that people want to do is they want to identify perhaps their own parcel or maybe a parcel that they're interested in, and they'll search either by a parcel number or a street address. I'm going to turn off a few layers here, just so we don't have quite a messy map. And I'm going to do a locate address, and I'm going to take you to my favorite place in Ventura County. Hit the locate button, and it automatically takes us to the Hall of Administration. Now, the other thing that you can notice is that not only did this quickly identify and take us right to the site that I searched for, but it also brought up the imagery. So our application will zoom in and zoom out, and it will bring up the appropriate imagery at the appropriate scale. If we bring up the imagery too soon, it can occlude the other information that's available. So we make some of those decisions ahead of time. But if we're at this location and we want to be able to see some of the other data, such as perhaps the election precincts or the streets and the parcels, when we look at the view this way, the imagery is occluding that other information. But we still want to keep the imagery up, so we can go into any layer and we can make it transparent. So I'm going to come down here, find our 2010 imagery, and I'm going to make it transparent. And you'll notice it starts getting lighter and lighter. And I'm going to keep doing it until I can see some imagery. But you'll notice we can still, we can now start seeing the names of the streets. We see parcel boundaries over here. And if I had any other data layers up, let me go back, and I can choose the precincts, that our precinct boundaries and our polling places can now show up as well. So now I'm going to show you Peg Man. Peg Man is Google's Street View symbol. They call him Peg Man because they think he looks like the little clothes peg or clothespin that we used to use on clotheslines. So what we do is we click on Peg Man, and we can move to any public street or intersection. I'm going to choose this intersection right outside of our office. And we are now using the Google tool, and we're looking at Google Street View imagery. They have driven thousands of miles throughout the United States, usually in major areas, major streets and intersections, with cars that are outfitted with cameras, usually nine cameras, that do a 360-degree panoramic view and about a 270-degree vertical panoramic view. And what's nice about this is that very often, people like to use a street view in order to navigate because they can look for landmarks. So if they were looking for the Hall of Administration, and you said, "Well, it's across the street from the Bank of America" or "across the street from the Citibank", then when they come in here and they start walking around, which is very easy, they can come down this way. It'll zoom in in a second. They can navigate around. They can use these tools up here. That's the Citibank across the street. Keep rotating around. And we get right back to our HOA. An important aspect of County View is that on the Internet version, we do not provide any information that would violate our privacy concerns for our public. I'm happy to say that Google Street View does likewise. And they have blurred out any faces and any license plates that may occur. And I won't take the time to do so here, but I have gone into a number of areas, zoomed right up to the front of an automobile or to a person on a bicycle, for example, and it is indeed blurred.
Can that be used by law enforcement eventually, too?
Absolutely.
And then you can go look at the license plate and...
That I don't know. They would have to go to Google, and I don't think that Google... They may have special relationships with law enforcement.
Or even the faces of the individuals, you know, so...
You know, we never know when these images are captured. That's one of the minuses of imagery that comes from Google, is that we never know when they capture them, it's difficult to find out. So we don't know if this was done last week or perhaps a couple of months ago.
Okay.
So the public can come in, they can look at layers, they can locate parcels and landmarks and so on. But certainly, one of the things that they enjoy doing, and one of the reasons that they come to our public counter, is so that we can create custom maps for them. Well, they can now self-serve. They can create their own custom maps through County View. And I'll just give you a brief overview of how they might do that. So let's turn Peg Man off. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to use two features, annotate and draw. Very often, that's what people want to do, both internally and externally, is they want to add some annotation to a map.
The Street View that you did of Google has no... It's not integrated at all into what you're presenting to us with the, what the county overlays are, is that correct?
It's integrated in the sense, Supervisor Parks, the Google Street View is integrated in the sense that they build their Street View with coordinates, with geographic coordinates. And since our maps are built with geographic coordinates, there is that linkage between our map and their imagery, so that we can visit any street, any public street in Ventura County. And for the larger ones, at least, there will be imagery from Google Street View, and it will be at the right location.
So it's basically a link to the Google Street View that you can go to as we're going through our GIS?
That is correct. That Google Street View is always a part of our app. It's also part of the Google Maps. When you visit Google directly, you'll see Peg Man on their site as well.
Right.
Always available. So I'm just going to make an annotation here that this is the government center. And then I'm going to quickly show that we can draw some lines or polygons if we wished. We have dots, polygons, and lines. I'm just going to draw some quick lines here that we might choose to use if we were showing somebody how to get from one point to another. Show them how to get to the government center, for example. Now, the one reason I wanted to show you this line or polygon if we were to do so is that you notice that as soon as I created the line, we had a length associated with that line. And that's a feature we can turn on and off here whenever we do any drawing. And we can also choose the units that we want to use, whether it's metric or English, and what kind of units we want to use. So now, the last thing that one might want to do after they've annotated and created their own custom map is they may either want to print it to their local printer or very often create a PDF version of that map. And if they create a PDF, they can share it with others electronically, and they can also print it. So they get a dialogue box. Create the PDF. I'm going to put this on the desktop because I want to open it and show it to you. Get over here to the desktop. Here's our PDF. The reason I wanted to show this to you is not only does this give a representation of the custom map that they just created, but it is a fully crafted map document. In other words, it has the north arrow, the scale, and more importantly, it has a legend, so that if they did have some of the other layers open, the streets, the parcels, they would note from this legend exactly what was there. So this becomes a credible document that the public can now create and print and store and share on their own. And they can do this as many times as they wish. Now, County View that I'm showing you through the Internet has a fraternal twin. And that is that we do have... Sorry. We do have County View on the Intranet available to our staff. It has all of the same features that I'm showing you through the Internet, but it has additional features that are available only to our staff because they have information that we typically would not disclose, information about property owners' names and addresses and so on. And one of the features that you can do from the Intranet is a parcel buffer. And that's often used for environmental noticing permits and so on. You go in, you identify a particular parcel, choose the buffer option, how far you want it to create a radius, maybe 300 feet, and then it identifies graphically all of the parcels that fall within there and creates a mailing label list that you can save off to your hard disk and create your mailing labels from directly. So we've made that available to the... In-house, to the county staff. The one other feature...
Can I ask something real quick?
Yes, Supervisor.
You said it's Intranet. Can, say, for example, code compliance is looking at a specific property, and they have a copy of the original plan of that particular home, can you zoom down to that particular property and see if there's an additional unit that was built without a permit or with a permit?
This particular application, both the Intranet and Internet version, do not have linkages with permit documents. I believe that that type of functionality will be available through the Exela upgrade, the new county land application.
Somebody comes in, you put a specific address, and you look at it, and we're not there yet with this particular one?
On this particular application, we don't have permits tied to it. We could. We can have any documents, maps, hyperlinks for websites linked to this application. Currently, that will be available through Exela. We do, we are working with the Exela project to ensure that they have all of the GIS functionality available through that application. So you will have the ability through one application.
I can expedite, you know, the code compliance and...
Correct.
Permit process and...
The assessor's office at this point in time does have that capability already on a system. The Exela will help us interlink all of that in a way that makes it beneficial to everybody.
And you'll still have the graphical representation with GIS along with it as well.
Okay.
Lori, is this set up to go, can you go to the unincorporated area? I know you were using the government center.
Yes.
If I gave you an address in the unincorporated area, could you go to it? Could you go to 5998 Conifer Street in Oak Park? It's 5998...
5998.
Conifer Street.
C?
It's in Oak Park.
C-O-N-I-F-E-R.
Conifer, okay. And that is, do you happen to know the zip code?
Parcel number, I have the parcel number.
Oh, I can look it up that way as well. If you have the zip, that also helps. But let's just try it as it is here. Does that look right?
Yeah.
Okay. The reason that I asked her to do this is that your board has an agenda item next week. It's on this project, which means that on the Intranet, you could look up quite a bit of information in advance of that hearing, just to see where the site is, all of that kind of thing.
Which brings me to agreements that I have. Where are, we've been informed that, at least with the Planning Commission, they're not to do any extracurricular review of any projects, including going on the Internet. So maybe that's something we can address in the future.
Seems, does not seem like good government... Huh?
It's not agendized, but I'm just putting it out there. That, as well as they don't want the Planning Commission to even drive by a property as individuals. So these are things we can discuss in the future. Sorry to interrupt.
But there's lots of adaptations relative to what the board does. So I'm going to, this is, yeah, I kind of wanted to go into the unincorporated area since that's the world issue you get to deal with.
Well, this is exactly the power of GIS. It's really how it can help you and help the public. And you will come up with additional information, layers, functionality that will be of meaning to both the public and to yourselves. I would also like to offer that if this is something that you find that you and your staff could make use of on a regular basis, that we can put together a very quick training session for anyone. The last thing that I'll show you is a feature. It's a vision into what's coming, and it's a really important feature that we've had available on the Intranet for our staff. And we are working on making it available for the Internet. And we call it the Drill Down Report. And what's important about this Drill Down Report, and why it's been wildly successful here within the county for staff, is because we can pick any parcel, let's say 5998 Conifer, and we can literally click on that particular location, choose the Drill Down Report, and we get a report that really looks very much like this. See if I can get this shifted up here. And I'll maximize it. This one was designed for planning GIS, just as it says, for our Resource Management Agency. And what you see across the top, and that's why this one's designed internally, because we have the owner name associated with the address and the parcel number. But the top of the report always identifies the particular parcel that you just selected. And then what you find in the report itself is, is it included or not included? So for all the various... So for all the various layers that planning GIS is interested in, all the data layers that sit underneath the parcel, does that parcel sit within this zoning? Does that parcel sit within that general plan? For the drill down that we'll make available to the public, they'll have in this one report, it'll state which elementary school district they're in, which high school district, the name of their precinct, the name of their elected officials, and so on. So instead of having to visit all of those spots on a map and getting that information through the Identify feature, they'll have a report that for every bit of information that's available for that parcel, it's right here in this report, and they can print it There are no substitutes for County View. It is the only Intranet available source of accurate and current spatial data and imagery for the county of Ventura. My staff update the parcel and street data every day. They update the other layers, data layers, on an appropriate cycle. Those updates are automatically available through County View. As soon as we complete the update, County View automatically sees the updates. So it's always looking at current parcels, current streets, current supervisory districts and information behind it. County View is going to continue to be updated, will continue to add data, will continue to add functionality that's meaningful to the public, and this will be something that we'll be doing on an ongoing basis. I believe that once County View becomes well-known, that we'll see a decrease in the number of email, telephone, and public counter inquiries for this type of information, and we'll see an increase in public satisfaction while they happily self-serve. May I answer any questions?
Any other questions?
Great.
Yeah. That's very cool.
And what do I ask? You said when everybody gets to know they're going to have great satisfaction, how are they going to get to know this is available to them? What's the plan?
Well, hopefully, this is the first step. I know that our public and our Ventura County Star keep tabs on the workings of government. I forgot to show you a really important, if you have one moment, I want to show you something that's important to the public and to you, one layer. One of the things that we've talked about, our CIO, Rick Jackson, is doing a press release to the public, to the Ventura County Star, let's say, and letting them know about this availability. But that's why we're here first, to see what your pleasure would be. I wanted to show you a layer, and I'm so sorry that I didn't show this earlier, that I worked with Susan Hughes from the CEO's office to generate. And this layer is the stimulus grants project layer. We have it right up here at the top. I'm going to turn it on. I'm going to zoom way out on the county. And the reason I want to show you this is because technology is a great facilitator for being able to share information about the workings of government. And we've been able to do that with an example layer here of the stimulus grants. And I'm going to turn off the other layers here. What you'll see are these little green symbols, and each one of those symbols represents one of the projects that the stimulus monies have generated a project for. There's one special up here, which I'm going to close this so we can see it. You'll notice over here, there's a special symbol. I'll first use the Identify, and I'll show you a couple of the individual projects. Clear this, and we'll look for the stimulus layer. And now, when I select this particular icon, you see that that is the project, you probably can't read it, it's $1.5 million for the Camarillo Airport improvements. So we can visit each one of these projects. This particular icon is special because there were a number of projects that are countywide and focused. There are some that are very specific, like the El Rio Sewer Project, which we can put a point right there. But there were other projects that you can see here, such as the Area Agency on Aging, that they had $195,000 for their Home Meals Program. There's a number of those projects in there. So for the countywide projects, what we did was just associate them all with the HOA. So what I also wanted to show you about this is this linkage, that the spatial data is meaningful, and we can link through the Identify a limited number of pieces of information. But what's most powerful is that we can link back to the CEO's website and look at all the additional information that they have, that they maintain about these projects. Thank you.
Again, yeah, it's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. And all questions answered? Yeah? Good? All right. This is a, do we have a card? We have a card. Is that for this item?
Yes.
Okay, Doug Sullivan.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good.
I think the GIS is a great program. I have several questions about it. Is that part of the Exela software, and is that an increased cost? What's the cost to that? We didn't talk about costs. Are we approving a new system? I know it already is approved, but is there a cost to that?
This is a receive and file item, and I believe we can answer the question. It's not a part of, the exact part of the Exela project.
Okay. And then my other question is, I was working this morning, so I didn't have time to get up here before the consent agenda. I'm speaking on this item because it's part of the IT department, Agenda Item Number 32. And on your, number seven on your agenda item, it says that consent items shall be routine and non-controversial. My question is, on item number 17, it's a separate item. You read it, it doesn't look like, it looks pretty innocuous when you read it, but then when you go under the actual attachment, it's basically another $805,000 to the Exela contract. So now we're going from $7.6 million. I just want to clarify, that's included in Exela or if it's separate? Or it's added to that?
We pulled that item because there are lots of questions. It will be continued on to next week's agenda.
I didn't know that, so that's why I wanted to get in here before I could say something. So it's going to be next week?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Board members, this item is a receive and file. There's a motion and a second to receive and file. Excellent work.
That's going to be, that's a, that's a great system. That's going to be pretty cool.
Yeah. Be very helpful.
Thank you.
Very customer-friendly, public-friendly. Thank you.
I like being able to tell the distances, show us the distances, how many acres things are, just give you a really good info.
That passes four, four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We've come a long way with GIS.
Yes, we have.
In the last few years.
Okay, Board members, that completes our time certain except for our closed session items. We'll go back to the regular agenda to get back to item 40. Item 40, which is Public Works. And it's a Public Works Transportation item.
Good morning, Board. Chair Long, Mrs. Robinson. For the, for the record, I'm Dave Fleisch, Director of Transportation Department here in the Public Works Agency. What you have before you today is a ratification of a grant that we applied for, a Tiger II Grant. The reason why this is coming before you as a ratification is that the period of time that we were doing this was when the board was dark in August, and so we were unable to get it to the board ahead of time. What this is, is a request for a planning grant money for planning design, preliminary design, and initial environmental documents for widening Huonimi Road. It's a joint project between the Ventura County Transportation Commission, the Oxnard Harbor District, and the county of Ventura, essentially to complete pretty much the final part of the freight corridor from the harbor to Highway 101. As you all are well aware, the Rice Avenue Interchange is underway right now. When that's completed, Highway 1 will be transitioned from Oxnard Boulevard to Rice. And what this will do is connect essentially the harbor on a four-lane road all the way to Rice Avenue. So what we're asking for out of this grant, again, is the initial planning funding for that. The unfortunate part of this is everybody's looking for money, so they had an estimated $6 billion worth of requests for $600 million worth of work. So don't know exactly where we're going to fall out in that. Do appreciate some support I got from Sue Hughes to get a letter from Congresswoman Capps that got to the Department of Transportation, hopefully help us out with this. So we're just, at this point, standing by to see if we get the grant. If we do, we'll be back before you get authorized us to spend our matching portion of that funding.
Okay, questions? Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve the item. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you for the work, and would be great to get the grant. Item 41 is Mr. Stevens.
Yes. Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board.
You're welcome.
Ms. Robinson, I'm Chris Stevens with the Resource Management Agency. My item before you this morning is to appoint Angela Godwin to a four-year term as our county sealer. Kind of an unusual opportunity. There are actually only 136 folks in the entire state who have all the certifications to be a sealer, and RMA is fortunate to have two of them. And when we promoted Jim Delperdang to run our Code Compliance Division, we brought in Angela to oversee the weights and measures. She is obviously more involved in the day-to-day operations. And by designating her as the county sealer, she'll create some efficiencies for us. She will be able to sign some of the documents that now she has to run to Jim, and she can also formally and more officially represent the county at the Statewide Sealer Association. As of now, when she attends, since she is not the official sealer, she is more of an observer in representing Jim in that respect. So we think it makes a lot of sense to designate and appoint Angela as the official sealer for the county of Ventura. And Angela and both Jim are here if you have any detailed questions about the operation, but that's the recommendation. If you have to answer any questions.
Okay, questions?
She needs to be certified by the state, isn't that what it is?
Yes, she has all of the state certifications. She simply needs to be appointed by the board to serve in that capacity.
I'll move that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve that appointment. That passes unanimously. Congratulations, Angela. Welcome to the new responsibilities.
Thank you.
Already had it, you just got to point it.
Jim, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chris, thank you. Okay, item 42 is, item 42, Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. This is a recommendation to appoint Jerry Miller to the Aviation and Aviation Advisory Commission. This is the one where I have like a dozen pilots and experts, and Jerry is the former president of Calhoun and has a good business background. I think he'll be a good addition, but boy, if I could appoint more, I sure have.
There's great interest, yes, there is. There's motion and a second on this, and we will now vote. And that passes unanimously. Then we have our Correspondence Agenda, 43, 44. Motion by, motion to move the Correspondence Agenda, is there a second? Hit some buttons here. All right, there we go. And everybody vote. And that passes unanimously. Okay, Board members, we now will have a closed session, and then we have a one-time certain. Do we expect an announcement from closed session? Oh, Supervisor, did you want to take that picture? Yeah. Does anybody have a camera?
We have a camera.
All right, we have a camera. Why don't we do that before we do this, because...
[inaudible]
Okay, I'm going to bring the meeting back to order after our closed session. Our Chair, Supervisor Long, is off, and I'm replacing her for this hearing. And we are now on a hearing on item 37, which is a public hearing regarding approval and adoption of an ordinance for privately initiated text amendment regarding education and training uses in industrial zone.
facilities, and water supply. The MND associated with the project, and I'll discuss that a little bit more later, is found all of the issues, environmental issues, to be less than significant. The project components considered by the Planning Commission hearing on July fifteenth, 2010, is, well, beginning with the zone text amendment, which of course is before your board today. Also, the amendment to the zoning ordinance related to changes in zoning classifications, which would change the M-three to the M-two. And then in detail, with the components of the modification to the existing conditional use permit to allow for the establishment of a professional photography and film school use, for the construction of two buildings, for the construction of a new parking lot on the northerly parcel, Assessor's Parcel, increase the number of students from one-thousand to a maximum of two-thousand, and increase the number of employees from one-hundred-and-fifty-two to a maximum of two-hundred. On July fifteenth, the Planning Commission took the following actions. They found that there would be no significant effect on the environment on the basis of the revised mitigated negative declaration and the project conditions of approval. They certified that the commission considered the information in the revised MND, and that it reflects the independent judgment of the county. They approved the revised MND, and they granted the major modification to conditional use permit LU-07-0001 contingent on your board's approval of the text amendment and the zone change. So just to be clear, that the only way that the conditional use permit can be amended so that they can construct the buildings and allow for the increase in the students would be if your board approves of the zone text and zone change. Okay, also at that Planning Commission hearing, they recommended to your board that you approve and adopt the zoning ordinance findings as set forth in the Planning Commission staff report, and as presented at that public hearing, and find that that zoning ordinance text amendment is in the interest of public health, safety, and general welfare, and good zoning practice, and is consistent with the county general plan. They also recommended to the board that you approve and adopt the zoning ordinance findings as set forth in the Planning Commission staff report, related to the zone change, as also in the interest of the public health, safety, and general welfare, and is consistent with the general plan. The recommendation to the Board of Supervisors is for the adoption of the inordinance amending the Division Eight, Chapter One, Articles Two and Five of the Ventura County Ordinance Code relating to education and training uses allowed in an industrial zone, and amendment and an amendment related to zoning maps and changes in zoning classifications to property. And then further, find the board... Recommended that the board finds that the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program approved by the Planning Commission constitutes adequate environmental review of the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment and zone change, and on the basis of the whole record before, that there is no substantial evidence that this project will have an effect, significant effect, on the environment, and that the MND reflects the Board of Supervisors' independent judgment and analysis. And by the way, that item there in the slide is one of the late items that's introduced to the board today, this morning, this afternoon. Public review of the environmental document, public comments, and Planning Division responses can be found in attachment in the revised MND, which is exhibit five and attachments one through four. The public notice and comments, notice of the proposed project in public hearing was completed in accordance with the zoning ordinance requirements. And at the time of the preparation of the board letter, no other comments on the project have been received with regard to the public hearing. And these last couple of slides are really to give a little bit more, maybe a better graphic visual image of what's going on here. Again, this is... This site here is what's exist... These buildings here are what are existing. This is Ventura Avenue. Out here is Ventura River. And this would be proposed Building One, proposed Building Two, and out here, as within the CUP project boundary, would also... Would be the proposed parking lot. This view here would be if you were on Ventura Avenue looking or SR-33 looking west. This would be the east elevation. So in the foreground, you can see is the existing building, the Brooks Building, one of the buildings, and this would be proposed Building One, as approximately being seen from, as I mentioned before, the streets. This would be... This is the same building, Building One, but this would be on the other side of the southern elevation. Oops, I think I went too far. And then this is Building Two, obviously, and looking again from the street, this would be the view one would see. It's not quite shown as well, but... And these widened out here, these are the existing buildings going up to this level here. The average height of the existing buildings here are approximately twenty-two feet. The average height of the buildings, proposed buildings, would be approximately thirty-seven As seen from SR-33, which as I mentioned, is an eligible scenic highway, this would be driving south on the SR-33, and that building here is the existing building out at Brooks, and that is the soundstage building, and that's approximately thirty-three... Thirty-two or thirty-three feet high. Here's some more of the buildings that would be in the foreground of the proposed buildings, and as I mentioned, those are on the average approximately twenty-two feet. And then this view here is again from SR-33, and this would be driving a little bit further south. And then in the foreground, you see some of the storage, and so from the roof also of the storage. Over here, jumping back a little bit, is the concrete batch plant. So this is just to give you an idea of what the view would be from SR-33. As you can see, this is an existing industrial area, and these are the views that can be seen from SR-33. And that concludes my presentation at this point. May I take any questions?
Does the board have any questions at this point? We do have a couple of public speakers.
Just one. Could you go back to that slide that showed the two M-two zones and then the M-three zones, about your third slide?
This one here?
I just want to be clear here. So it's zoned M-two above it and M-two below it?
Correct. That is M-two.
And the M-three would be changing the zoning, so changing the zoning to M-two.
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Generally, the applicant can go first. We'll give you fifteen minutes, but you don't have to use it.
Good afternoon. I will be brief. The Brooks Institute of Photography's been in business for about sixty-one years in the central coast, started in Santa Barbara. They came down to Ventura about ten years ago. They've been a vibrant member of the community. They have brought clean, high-paying wage jobs to the community. The students spend on average, you know, twenty thousand dollars per year when they come to the community, living, restaurants, retail expenses. So it's the ideal type of business you'd like to see do better and continue to prosper in the area. We have been working with Brooks. They would ideally love to come to Ventura on a consolidated basis from Santa Barbara. They think that Ventura offers them opportunities to save costs and overhead, and it's better to be in one location as opposed to multiple locations. So this proposed expansion would allow them to do that. We've gone through a very thoughtful process with the planning folks. It has involved a number of levels of approval. We think that the environmental document and review process has been very thoughtful and careful as well. So we are excited about the opportunity. We are the landlord. Brooks is our tenant. Getting this approval date gives them the flexibility to evaluate the opportunity. It is not a certainty that they will come to Ventura with an expansion. It's merely something that they can now plan for, that they hadn't had that tool before. I think that's it.
And could you give us your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. John Dewey with RDK JV Campus LLC.
Okay. And have you filled out a blue card? And if not, would you please?
I could.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have two more speakers. Pat Baggerly.
He comes from Newport Beach. My name is Pat Baggerly, and I'm representing the Environmental Coalition of Ventura County. We have followed this project since nineteen ninety... Not this particular project, but when Western Instrument came in, the Environmental Coalition supported the mill school being changed to a use that was very much more limited than this. We know... We knew it was an industrial area, and Henning Otson worked with the Environmental Coalition. He provided all native plants. He kept it low-key. He didn't build buildings that were going to block the view to the river or anything else around, and it had a lot of support. Unfortunately, the Environmental Coalition can't support this project. They're putting in, I think they're forty-foot towers, although that wasn't mentioned. A technical issue was that I noticed that in the public notice, nothing was mentioned about environmental review, nor was it mentioned in the staff report, and until one-thirty-five, I didn't have this exhibit twenty-one that mentioned something about environmental review. I think that should be corrected. That's up to your board. Our concerns are with the Concrete Express batch plant being directly across the street, and what that does to students. That's one of our concerns. The Concrete Express is located directly across Ventura Avenue, a two-lane street. And I'm not going to read all of this letter, but I'm going to read parts of it, because I know you have a lot of work. It's in your packet from the Planning Commission, but I do want to put it in the record again. The current M-three zoning that is on the Brooks Institute parcel is consistent with the closest developed land, and was intended to be that way to avoid future conflicts between land uses. Exposing two thousand students plus two hundred employees to the Concrete Express batch plant and the four pounds of dust per hour allowed to emanate from the concrete mixing process was questioned by EC in our letter dated April twenty-eighth, two thousand and nine, addressed to the Planning Commission. The email information from Ventura County Air Pollution Control District to Chuck Anthony did not include an evaluation of the caustic materials and silica dust. While it is true, if the zoning is changed to M-two, the project will not be placed on a heavy industrial zone, but the heavy industrial zone does exist right across the street of the Concrete Batch Factory. And although the county staff has provided responses in the mitigated negative declarations for the impacts related to particulate matter from Concrete Express, they were only preliminary comments. No sampling of air quality was done. APCD did not review impacts from silica that is part of Portland cement used by Concrete Express during their review. The other thing that they didn't do was deal with the airflow that comes out of Wellton Canyon and Canyada Larga, and that air will blow the emissions from Concrete Express right onto this parcel. I asked for that from the Planning Commission, and one of the Planning Commissioners mentioned it might be good to evaluate more of the air quality issues, but that was not supported by the full Planning Commission. So we suggest that an independent thorough review take place with air quality samples being collected, and an analysis be conducted at and within the property lines of Brooks Institute. The analysis should be done during the early morning and nighttime, when the drainage winds from Canyada Larga would blow the dust from Concrete Express toward the Brooks Institute location and its students and employees. And even the project applicant mentioned that, you know, dust isn't a problem, but he parks his car in front of the Brooks Institute. And of course, there is this thin dust that sometimes accumulates on his car. Well, that thin dust is what goes into people's lungs and students' lungs. So I think this is a really serious change that they're asking you to make. And I think it could be at least continued, because there's a sign on the twenty-eight-acre parcel where the parking is proposed now, and it's for sale. And...
And I have two more speakers, Pat Baggerley.
He comes from Newport Beach. My name is Pat Baggerley, and I'm representing the Environmental Coalition of Ventura County. We have followed this project since 1990, not this particular project, but when Western Instrument came in, the Environmental Coalition supported the mill school being changed to a use that was very much more limited than this. We know, we knew it was an industrial area. And Henning Otzen worked with the Environmental Coalition. He provided all native plants. He kept it low-key. He didn't build buildings that were going to block the view to the river or anything else around, and it had a lot of support. Unfortunately, the Environmental Coalition can't support this project. They're putting in, I think they're 40-foot towers, although that wasn't mentioned. A technical issue was that I noticed that in the public notice, nothing was mentioned about environmental review, nor was it mentioned in the staff report until 135, I didn't have this Exhibit 21 that mentioned something about environmental review. I think that should be corrected. That's up to your board. Our concerns are with the Concrete Express Batch Plant being directly across the street and what that does to students. That's one of our concerns. The Concrete Express is located directly across Ventura Avenue, a two-lane street. And I'm not going to read all of this letter, but I'm going to read parts of it because I know you have a lot of work. It's in your packet from the Planning Commission, but I do want to put it in the record again. The current M3 zoning that is on the Brooks Institute parcel is consistent with the closest developed land and was intended to be that way to avoid future conflicts between land uses, exposing 2,000 students plus 200 employees to the Concrete Express Batch Plant and the four pounds of dust per hour allowed to emanate from the concrete mixing process was questioned by EC in our letter dated April 28, 2009, addressed to the Planning Commission. The email information from Ventura County Air Pollution Control District to Chuck Anthony did not include an evaluation of the caustic materials and silica dust. While it is true, if the zoning is changed to M2, the project will not be placed on a heavy industrial zone, but the heavy industrial zone does exist right across the street of the Concrete Batch Factory. And although the county staff has provided responses in the mitigated negative declarations for the impacts related to particulate matter from Concrete Express, they were only preliminary comments. No sampling of air quality was done. APCD did not review impacts from silica that is part of Portland cement used by Concrete Express during their review. The other thing that they didn't do was deal with the airflow that comes out of Weldon Canyon in Canyada Larga. And that air will blow the emissions from Concrete Express right onto this parcel. I asked for that from the Planning Commission, and one of the planning commissioners mentioned it might be good to evaluate more of the air quality issues, but that was not supported by the full Planning Commission. So we suggest that an independent thorough review take place with air quality samples being collected and an analysis be conducted at and within the property lines of Brooks Institute. The analysis should be done during the early morning and nighttime when the drainage winds from Canyada Larga would blow the dust from Concrete Express toward the Brooks Institute location and its students and employees. And even the project applicant mentioned that, you know, dust isn't a problem, but he parks his car in front of the Brooks Institute. And of course, there is this thin dust that sometimes accumulates on his car. Well, that thin dust is what goes into people's lungs and students' lungs. So I think this is a really serious change that they're asking you to make. And I think it could be at least continued because there's a sign on the 28-acre parcel where the parking is proposed now, and it's for sale. And that 28-acre parcel is one that has to deal with drainage out of Canyada Larga, which is huge, as you know. You know, there are these flows that have come out of there that wash cows down Canyada Larga and wash barns away, and it's a very dangerous situation. We think it's dangerous to have a lot of students there, and we don't think it's a good process to ask and to have an applicant ask for a change of zone for one thing that affects everything in the county either. I think this deserves more thought and more investigation and better public noticing. Thank you. I'm going to turn in this postcard about what this place originally looked like. Thank you.
Would you like to get that postcard back after we look at it?
No, I know I can't have it back.
Well, if we look at it, we can return it. Thank you for your comments, Pat. And our next comment speaker is Buzz Banzal.
Good afternoon, Board. Buzz Banzal of Ranch Hill, Canyada Larga. We're neighbors across from the existing Brooks campus to the east across the Ojai Freeway and to the north, north of the city of Ventura's water treatment plant. Brooks Institute has been a great neighbor for us, bringing a lot of high-tech job presence and a much nicer situation than was there previously. The area is rather blighted, as you all know, and I'm thinking that Brooks Institute has been a big contributor to the revitalization of the North Avenue area and look forward to your approval of this project so that revitalization can continue. And ultimately, perhaps the city of Ventura will annex this area and take it off your hands and into their capable hands. I look forward to your approval of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? Thank you. Appreciate the comments. Does anybody else wish to comment? Otherwise, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period of the hearing and go to the board if there are any questions.
Only question I had was, is that very close to the city of Ventura where ultimately they're going to be annexed to the city? Do you know?
The city is, the city has some conversations going about potentially annexing the area, but, oh, go ahead, I'll let staff answer, but nothing definitive yet.
The particular property is not contiguous to the city, so itself today is not annexable.
Oh, okay.
There are, as the supervisor mentioned, some ongoing discussions of the possibility, after a lot of study, as to whether or not the entire North Ventura Avenue area should be annexed to the city of Ventura, since it is within their sphere of influence.
Okay. And how about the, and I'm sure probably the supervisor, the dust, you know, that Pat was talking about, and was that addressed in the EIR?
Why don't you ask Air Pollution Control District?
We have the Air Pollution Control District here. I know that they addressed it in the MND. Would you like to come and answer Supervisor Aragosa's question?
Good afternoon. I'm Terri Thomas with the Air Pollution Control District. And I did do a screening level evaluation of the health impacts of the Concrete Express dust on the Brooks property. This is usually a first step that we would do before we went on to a more detailed expensive study. I took standard data from the Air Resources Board on the composition of the concrete dust and ran it through a very conservative screening model at their maximum permitted levels. And basically, it was shown to not be an impact through this screening, so there was no reason to go on to a more detailed analysis of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Supervisor Foy.
I think that, I love those, those buildings look great, and it looks like a tremendous improvement in what we'd see there, bringing 1,000 more students, and I think that's, that's a great opportunity. Besides what they'll spend and do, I think it's great, and 50 more jobs is really good. I think that's great for the area and a really improvement. I also think some of that dust, if you get in those areas, you know, there's probably dust just off the ground and everything else that's part of that. So I'm glad to hear that. My only, my only thought on this whole thing is there is that plant, and I just don't want to be in a position that we really add something that's great, and then we hurt the other organizations there, which is that concrete plant. And what I'm saying with that is I don't know from the standpoint if they want to expand, the business gets good, they can continue to do that. It's an industrial zone, right? We're not going to have, last time, why I say that is we ended up before where somebody was trying to put a concrete crushing plant in and all industrial, the whole place, and all of a sudden we were next to the juvenile hall, and there's kids there and people, and we couldn't do something that was zoned for. And I want to make sure we're not hurting somebody else to do it, but it sounds like we, they're already there, they can continue to do that, and they could expand that if they wanted to do that, because that's the area they would do that anyway. So if, am I right in saying that? I just want to make sure we don't.
Well, certainly, the existing use is permitted, and they have the, basically, the right to continue. Should they choose to propose something that would expand it, that itself would cause additional air quality impacts, then that's something we would have to evaluate under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Right. But I guess what I'm saying is that what they're doing, and I guess they could mitigate some of those issues, but just because there's, quote, a school there now, because I know it has a tendency when you do school, they want to be careful that we're not adding something wonderful but damaging somebody else on your side, but it sounds like they're at 450 trips. That's a pretty good-sized plan as it is right now, putting, putting a lot out there. I don't know if the gentleman wanted to.
Just one comment. We've been there for the last nine years. We've never had a single incidence, any of our students or faculty complaining about any health issues. So we've been good neighbors with the batch plant. They've come over and asked us if we had any dust issues, and we've said no. Frankly, the prevailing winds generally blow up from the ocean, not coming across our campus, but blowing whatever dust there is towards the freeway and our, unfortunately, our friends in Ojai. But the levels of dust are so insignificant, has not caused a single health issue in the last 10 years.
Well, that's good. I just want to make sure we're good neighbors working together. I'm glad to hear that.
Absolutely.
That's perfect. That's wonderful. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. One is, the question was raised as to whether, when you notice, you have to also notice that your, your environmental document is, so is the notice all up to stuff?
First of all, Mr. Anthony, can you share the public notice that went to the paper? That's the most important one, not the...
Excuse me, that's the same question that Pat Baggerley raised?
Correct.
Is that the question you're asking? Because I wanted to make sure we got the answer there.
Yeah, the, well, the information was, I'll have to grab the postcard and buried in the files somewhere, but by all means, the Planning Commission rendered its decision. They approved, certified and approved the environmental document. And then at this point, the, that information was, of course, made public. It was through a resolution, the Planning Commission issued a resolution. The next step, as far as in the planning, in the board letter, is that the information was, as I said, it was approved, or the environmental document was approved and was adopted as an oversight. I'll take responsibility for that, that it did not get forwarded in on the recommended actions to the board. The reason being for the mitigated negative declaration not getting there was that it had been approved and it had been adopted, and it was something that should have been before the board and now is before the board of supervisors as a finding that the board finds that the environmental document was adequately reviewed and assessed by the Planning Commission. So I'm, I'm not quite sure. As I said, I'll be happy to...
I think it's also more of a question, I think, for legal counsel, if we've noticed correctly, that would be the gist of the question.
The code section that applies to public hearings is in Government Code Section 65090. And looking at the requirements of that notice requirement in state statute, all that's required is notice shall be, shall include the information specified in another particular section, and all that's required there is the date, time, and place of the public hearing, the identity of the hearing body, and a general explanation of the matter to be considered. Looking at what was done by the newspaper notice, again, Mr. Anthony has that, that would be sufficient for the Government Code section in this case. As far as SEQA and additional SEQA information, there's no additional SEQA requirements for specific notice once action is taken. Once a notice of determination is made, that's sufficient notice, and that was done at the Planning Commission level.
Thank you.
But it is, but we do have to adopt the find that the mitigated negative deck, et cetera, was approved by the Planning Commission was adequate. Is that correct?
Yes, that's one of your findings.
So we didn't have to notice that it was one of the actions today, but we have to take it as one of the actions today. Is that correct?
It is one of the actions you need to take. The notice is sufficient for what, for those reasons I read from the statute.
So a good catch by Pat Baggerley that we had to take this action today.
And then, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to also mention that I do have the record of the newspaper article and publication that shows that the mitigated negative declaration was noticed in the newspaper and for the, as a part of the public hearing requirements.
Thank you.
So if you'd like, I can submit this.
That's, that's great. Another question that I have, Mr. Smith, is if the parking lot is going to be, have pervious or somehow deal, deal with runoff because you're right there at the river? Do we know if that's part of the mitigation?
I don't know.
Yes, it's a pervious surface. Yes, it is a pervious surface, and also what was shown on the graphic was before the updated noncoastal zoning ordinance parking. So the actual parking footprint is probably going to be reduced by 25 to 35% over what you saw up there.
Okay, good.
A lot of landscaping in the new zoning ordinance.
Does the city of Ventura have a architectural review board that things go through, their projects?
For city projects, they do. We already spent a lot of time, it went through a development review process, including ARB. So the city, and there are letters in the file with their multiple approvals given as a commenting agency because it's in their sphere of influence and planning area boundary.
So they did give input and it was received?
They did, and they were very pleased with the consistency with the mission, Spanish theme for the architectural styling.
I'm glad they are able to have some input on that. Thank you. Now, that concludes my questions. Anybody else have questions, comments? Supervisor Bennett?
I, I guess I don't have questions. The, the one question I wanted to ask is, is the one about the environmental review. But I do have a comment to make about this project, and that is that the economics of, the economics of professional business schools has changed dramatically here, just in the last couple of years. Things are really going like hotcakes, and they were growing like crazy, and Brooks was growing like crazy, and that has all, that's all changed in terms of federal government support for this, et cetera. So whether this project goes forward or not, and whether this project goes forward at this size, I think is, is certainly far from certain, right? And like I said, it gives them the option to, to do this. I always appreciate Pat Baggerley's careful review of these kinds of projects. I know she's, she's had the opportunity to talk to our MAC, our Ojai Valley MAC, about this also, et cetera. But with that, in spite of those comments, I think that, that is appropriate for us to end this, this planning process, which I think is probably a long ways away from beginning the, any kind of development process. So I'd move the recommended action of staff, including the, the addition of Item 6 about the mitigated declaration.
So that's a motion. Motion by Supervisor Bennett, second by Supervisor Foy. Would everyone please vote? Motion passes 4-0. And with that, we, I believe, stand adjourned. I'm correct? Were you adjourned?